Madam President, would you please hold the roll?
Let me take a roll call vote. Ms. Ackerman?
Present.
Mr. Dane?
Present.
Ms. Escobedo?
Present.
Mr. Howell?
Present.
And myself, Mary Hartman, present.
Okay.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We're ready to start. We have started with our public comment period.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Combs and I'm here as representing the Personnel Board. I'm co-chair with my colleague Bill Muratcek. And we're here because we had expected actually to be on the agenda for this evening because we've been working so hard on our update for the bylaw. And we would like to have that in as an article. It has to go through the town meeting to be approved and updated and we wanted to make sure that you here at the Select Board are aware and understanding of the changes that we've made to the bylaw to update it and that you then approve that before it goes in as an article for the warrant. And I just wanted to point out the history of this is that the Personnel Study Task Force that was put together, I think if I'm correct by the Select Board, recommended that we update this bylaw. And so we've been really trying hard, particularly after the new CNC plan last year and the implementation of that, working very hard with the town manager and her support to manage all the changes in the HR department, but on top of that to get this bylaw ready so that we're now a year after the Personnel Study Task Force report was put forward and we really want to show the team on the Personnel Board is taking that responsibility seriously. So we urge you to have us on your agenda for January 2nd so that we will be able to put that in for January 3rd and be in the appropriate timeframe for that article to update the bylaw for the Personnel Board. Are there any questions or?
Do we need a motion?
I don't think so.
No. My understanding is that, thank you for working on this, we definitely need it. And my understanding is that the Personnel Board can just submit this article and the Select Board, certainly we want to hear all about it, but even if we don't hear it January 2nd, you can still submit it.
We did put in a placeholder currently, but my understanding was that we needed the communication to be clear and broad, including Select Board getting a process through to town employees that are covered under the bylaw, as well as having town council that we discussed early at our meeting this evening.
Well, I think, I think Carrie, if you can explain what you've learned from legal counsel about this?
What are we talking about, putting things on? I thought we really have to get into that at this point.
Well, Carrie, Carrie is asking.
If we are going to have a meeting on January 2nd, which I think we are, and we will have the personnel, the draft of the personnel bylaw in our hands, you know, a week before January 2nd, is that possible? Then we don't have to worry. I think then we can just deal with it on January 2nd without having to get into the larger issue which is on the relationship of the Select Board to the various town committees.
Well, that's what Liz is saying. She wants it on January 2nd.
Well, that's, okay, that's fine.
That's fine. But I'm just, I'm just saying even, I don't know that you even need our permission.
Well, it doesn't matter because you will have it if we get it.
Okay.
Yeah. It's also, I think part of the message here is that boards and committees need clarity on it and of course there'll be chairs meeting on Wednesday morning where hopefully this will be sorted out for all committees. In addition to that though, the Personnel Board just met and they've put together a very nice summary. It is a significant change. It involves our relationships as employers and employee relations and so there's a nice summary of what's moving around, what has changed and what's proposed in this and I think that it does deserve some attention from the board. So I appreciate the work they're doing.
I agree. I agree entirely. We have gotten some information back from town council on the issue of the process of putting items on the town meeting warrant. And I think that it may involve some changes in the way we handle these things, but we are now so close to the deadline that I think we're gonna, I think what I'd rather do is let things go along pretty much as we have been doing them and be very flexible on this issue and then have the board develop a policy about our relation, how we decide what goes on the warrant. So, I mean, but I don't think we need to get really deep into that right now.
Well, while we're on the topic, I know that Liz is-
This is public comment time.
I know, I know that, but it's an important topic and Liz has brought up one, but there are others that are in queue as far as, you know, expecting to be placed on the warrant without going through the citizens' petition process. So could we also collect a list of those while we're, while we're at it?
We can do that.
Yeah, I think we should.
I mean, it's the time to do it.
Well-
So, I have, given that I'm the liaison to the Ag Committee, I'd like the amendment that the Ag Committee brought forward at the preview meeting to be on the January 2nd warrant as well.
This is the five cent bag thing?
Yes. It's a small, non-controversial. Very non, yes.
My last comment then would be thank you and as you mentioned, there's maybe a transition in the process. I would want to be sure that with my comments here tonight publicly stated that the Personnel Board articles are not gone through, go through the cracks because we really do want, we've been working very hard this year to be a responsible committee to take up the work that was recommended by the Personnel Study Task Force and a lot of that work specifically with the bylaw and so forth has to go through town meeting. We don't want to put it off another year.
I mean, I think it's, this is a pretty clear case because this project is one that really, is one that was sponsored by the board originally. And so, I mean, we obviously want to bring it forward if it's ready to go.
It's ready to go.
Good.
That said though, there are other articles from other committees that have, that were in fact presented at the December 2nd meeting with those committees looking to have those articles placed on the warrant and yet they're not in the list of articles that we're going to review later. So I'll want, when we get to that, I'll be-
Why don't we do that?
Looking to, looking to ensure those are-
If there's anything that we need to discuss about items that should or should not have been on that list on our agenda, we can do it in that context.
To that further point though, there are committees that I'm liaison to that are also working with and discussing articles and they were under the impression that they needed the December 15th deadline and have in fact until January 3rd to submit articles and we need to have a process by which we also place those articles that committees that we've appointed bring forward inside of that. So we do need some work on this process.
Well, yes. And there was another issue which is the fact that, I don't know where this came from, but it may come from the moderator with that December 15th deadline for submitting drafts for review. And I, so that's, I think that comes from the moderator and part of the legal review of articles that go on the warrant. And it may not be a no or go or no-go issue, it may be a fine tuning them.
Right. It seems like the process is a little different than it's been. So instead of going over it now, if we could go over on January 2nd and make sure we have everything included and what the new process is, that would be great.
That's fine.
I don't know if we'll be able to do the new process on January 2nd.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Perhaps when you get to the item on your agenda this evening where you're talking about warrant articles, you could have some discussion about what advice we should be giving to-
Okay.
-boards and committees between now and-
All right.
-January 2nd.
Okay, let's do that.
So, I know we're a little bit behind in public comment. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
We do.
Do we? Yes.
We do.
I'm Tracy Moreno, 39 Partridge Lane, Chair of the Regional School Committee. The first time I was made aware of a potential warrant article for solar at CCHS was after the town warrant preview meeting on December 2nd. As you are aware, any additions or proposals for the alteration to CCHS campus need to be voted on by the Regional School Committee for acceptance and approval. I met with Mr. Banfield, the Superintendent and CPS Chair Alexa Anderson on October 23rd as we are the team that plans our school committee agendas. Mr. Banfield shared with the entire school committee the CADMS Solar and Energy Feasibility Assessment from May 22nd, 2020. As the CADMS report states, "The roofs of the high school are the best candidates for solar and together could host 365 kilowatt nameplate of PV modules. The roofs are free of significant shading from trees." As we discussed with Mr. Banfield at our October 23rd meeting, in order to be put on our school committee agenda, we're looking for more information on the actual design of the intended solar and the placement of the arrays. And without that, it would be irresponsible to have a discussion at the school committee level. I've not seen the language of the warrant article, but I have heard that it's an $8 million warrant article. It would be helpful if Mr. Banfield could provide to the school committee the intended recommendation from the solar task force. There was some-
That, it was pointed out to me that that item is on our agenda today.
Yes. Can I make public comment now or I have to wait?
Well, we should, public comment is for, is for items that are not on the agenda.
So there's no public comment for any item on the agenda?
When we get to that.
Oh, when you get to it?
Yep.
So you want me to start over then?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
But don't repeat everything.
Right. Because then Mr. Banfield will be here and he can hear.
And so we're not going to strike that from the record. We will, okay, go.
Is a public comment about something that it's not in the agenda.
Right. That's what we like, something from left field.
My name is Luis Perspidey. I serve as Chair of the Historic Districts Commission. I'm making these comments about the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Town Warrant article to consider the formation of a task force to review and update the charges policies and protocols of the Historic Districts Commission and the Historical Commission. We ask the Select Board not to endorse or support the proposed town warrant article. For the past 60 years, the Historic Districts Commission has been at the forefront of preserving the historic and cultural legacy of Concord and has evolved with societal changes. As such, the Historic Districts Commission now devotes substantial efforts to preserve the historic, the historic legacy of minorities and underrepresented communities. The Historic Districts Commission does not operate according to policies or protocols. It considers applications for appropriateness and renders decisions by majority vote on a case-by-case basis. The Historic Districts Commission does not control the application they receive nor does it have a say in their content or intent. Its decisions in matters related to diversity, equity and inclusion are contextual to the applications. I state with confidence that the Historic Districts Commission has actively supported the inclusion of minorities and underrepresented communities in the physical historical references of Concord and that this effort is continuous and is considered essential to its charge. This historic, the Historic Districts Commission does not have, nor can it have, a primary purpose of implementing social change. Policies and practices that ensure fair treatment, access, opportunity and advancement for all are not its purview. Yet these factors play a central role on all of its decisions. We have asked the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission to articulate the issues where the Historic Districts Commission and the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission can work cooperatively to address the needs of underrepresented communities from the standpoint of the physical historic reference of Concord. They have not identified what these issues are or what they may be. We do not believe that forming a task force to review and update the charges, policies and protocols of the Historic Districts Commission would serve a constructive purpose. Therefore, we ask the Select Board not to endorse or support the proposed town warrant. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
I think now would be a good time maybe to discuss what's the Select Board's role at this point in the process and it's not to recommend action on a particular article. It's our decision now as whether to make it available on the warrant for the town to have a discussion. So I think some people are kind of assuming that by putting it on the warrant, we're somehow endorsing or supporting an article and my interpretation is by putting it on the warrant, all we're doing is allowing the town to have the discussion and the town to make the decision. In this case, it wouldn't even be a, it wouldn't even be a binding decision. It would just simply be an urging to set up a task force. So your point's well taken. I'm just saying, I'm thinking it's kind of out of-
Well, but it happens that that, that this particular item is not on the agenda.
That's true, but it seems to be that people are confused about the process and I think we kind of, we kind of did this to ourselves. So I'm hoping that we can somehow clarify it and maybe we'll clarify it when we come to these, but I-
Right. I think the confusion is there's one way that we put it on the warrant like you're saying-
Yep.
And let the town debate it.
Right.
The other way is that we put it on the warrant and the Select Board is the sponsor. And that's a different thing. So we're, and we're going to-
But I, right. And I'm not sure that the sponsorship is something that we're, we do when we put something on the warrant.
Not, right. There's two separate things.
Right. So, but-
I recognize, I recognize the fact that we make recommendations which are published in the Finance Committee Report for action.
After the warrant's closed?
No action or affirmative action. I also would, would suggest that the converse of what you were saying, Mary, is important. If we, when asked by an appointed town committee to put something on the, on the warrant, reject that request, then we are weighing in with the decision as to the, potentially the merits or at least the, the structure of whatever article that is. And I think that, that negative outcome is also important to consider. And so I think that at this stage of the game, while we're deciding what, to place things on the warrant, our, our default position should be if it comes to us through a committee that has voted it in regular order, then I think at that stage of the game, our, our approach is put it on the warrant.
I think it's a matter of degree. I think it's a matter of degree that goes, it's a continuum and I think it should be a continuum from things that are obviously, should go on the warrant that the, that the Select Board can support and will sponsor to go on the warrant because they are things that we are likely to recommend affirmative action on. Whereas on the other-
I don't agree with that. Sorry.
If we, if we take that approach, what we're really going to end up doing is encouraging committees who feel strongly that their articles need to be on the warrant to go ahead and back up their request to the Select Board to put it on the warrant with a petition article. And then we have a morass of, of articles on the warrant which no action is expected on because something else happened and we're, we're going down a dark hole of, of process confusion.
I think we should wait and hear from Carrie at the time when it's on the agenda.
If I, if I may explain a tiny little bit, we are not asking the Select Board for any action on any matter. This is not on a town warrant right now. We don't have seen anything related to this proposal. It was read on the December 2nd meeting and we feel that it's very important that the Historic Districts Commission articulates exactly what its position and therefore requests the Select Board not to support it in any way.
Later on.
There's a very good case because we have one committee that wants to put something on and another committee that doesn't want to put it on.
But putting it on isn't the, is, right?
Yes, it may be. So we'll, we'll talk about that.
I think we deserve, I think our job is to bring it to the town.
Okay. But if we're going to talk about it, Mary, let's hear from Carrie and, Carrie, what is the process? Because it seems really different this year and we think we're getting confused here.
Well, if- From my perspective, I've been with the town going on eight years, not forever, but a long enough time to know, at least from my perspective, that we had a process that worked very well for a long time that I guess is not documented. And not, not just this year. I saw it, I think, for the first time when we talked about the additional funding for the middle school at special town meeting, a discussion about whether or not the Select Board needed to vote to put something on the warrant. We talked about it more for annual town meeting. Last year, we're talking about it again and we are creating a lot of confusion. Somebody referenced the December 15th date. That date is internal for staff to submit articles up through the process. I'm not sure how that date got out to boards and committees.
It's on the calendar, that's why. There's a calendar.
But the, but the calendar is, is both staff-
Right.
-deadlines and public, so perhaps it's not noted appropriately.
Right.
We do not always have a complete legal review even at the close of the warrant. We have a, a special meeting about 10 days after the close of the warrant to complete the legal review. So it's, everything is really confusing right now and I think, as I mentioned in an email earlier to you when I shared the legal opinion of sorts, that the calendar is not built for the Select Board for all of these warrant articles to come before the Select Board, before the warrant closes. And if that's the process, and I like the idea of documenting because I think we have taken for granted an unwritten process and, you know, it's being challenged in certain aspects and that's, that's fine. So that means it needs to be documented. But I think we need to add a couple of weeks to the warrant being opened because it's just not built to have multiple Select Board meetings inside of that process to adjudicate these warrant articles.
Okay. So given, given that we don't have that this year, we don't have that available to us this year, the two extra weeks for us to review articles and see if we-
Yeah. That, I mean, that's why I suggested that it would be helpful when you, when we take this up, when we get to the point on the agenda where we take this up, that you give us some guidance that we can share out as to how the Select Board is going to, what process you want to see given the time constraints so that we can make sure boards and committees that do not have their independent legal standing and most don't, that we can advise them on what they need to do so they're not missing out on an opportunity.
But at the same time, we have on our agenda a number of those items for us to consider and I have to accept some of the responsibility for this confusion because I asked a question that had not been asked for a long time. And that is exactly what the role was of the Select Board in putting items on the town meeting agenda. It may be because I go back so far in my experience with the town that I assume things were the way they were, I think, many years ago when in fact it was pretty clear that the Select Board played a major role in what went on the agenda. But it is, we need to have, we have to be practical about what we have in front of us and decide, you know, what we're going to do now. And, but as I say, there's a continuum and there are some things that may be so far off the, the reservation that they are things that we just don't want to have the town meeting consider such as things that the town meeting does not have authority to deal with. But we'll get to that point.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I understand also that the, there's, the view of the Historical Commission on this matter is similar to yours.
Thank you very much.
Joe Pombo, Cock President, just super quickly, Andrea and I consider Luis a colleague and with the advice we've gotten from Mark and others, we're working hard to build a relationship both Historic Commission and Historic District Commission. We made some good progress with Historic Commission the other night about working on some of this work around their operation and charges and we hope to do the same thing with Luis and we're in communication and hope that we can continue to. I know Luis said he's not heard the reasons why and that's, I guess, we've felt, we've articulated them, but communication only works if it's been received. So we haven't done a good enough job yet at communicating the work we want to do, but we'll continue to work with you, Luis, and your team in any way possible to get this figured out.
So thank you, Joe, because I think that was, that was a suggestion that I made. Joe, that was a suggestion that I made in terms of how we deal with the situation where we have different committees that have, you know, want to work together on issues.
We reiterate that we're more than happy to work together with EDI. We want to use it to normal channels and we want to have normal discussions through our meetings. So we look forward and we have exchanged plenty of correspondence and we're probably going to have to have a beer very shortly because we're very tired.
Thank you. All right. So do we have any, so this is, this is a public comment and steroids, I think.
Yes, sorry, sorry.
Do we have any, do we have any other public comment before we get on to our regular business? Good. Thank you, everybody. I always appreciate it when people just show up and it's, we have, I think, a much better conversation when we're looking at each other face to face. But now I think we're ready to move on to the consent agenda?
Yes. I've got one change to the consent agenda before I move to approve it on item F, the amended Concord Center Cultural Task Force Charge. The copy that you have in your packet needs another change, which is to go from three to five members. If you remember, we discussed that.
That's right.
So that's a change that isn't in the packet, but I will make it. So with that change, I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, and I want to commend Henry or whoever wrote this letter to the Mass Department of Transportation. I don't know who wrote it. Beth did. It's a really excellent, excellent letter.
I would like, especially some details, I would like to have the opportunity, as long as I'm signing it, is to do a little editing to it. So if you just send it to me in Word, I can deal with. Just some of the little things such as it's set up to be signed by all of the board and yet it only has my signature at the end. So send it to me and is there a deadline on that one?
I'll have to check.
But if we have a few days, send it to me in Word and I'll just do a little massaging on it. Okay. Because I have loads of time on my-
But not substantive changes?
No, no, I don't believe in substance.
That's right.
I don't believe in substance at all. So-
Okay. I have a motion and-
And we, I have seconded it.
Okay. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Mr. Howell?
Aye.
unanimous. Committee appointments. Linda Ferrari of 20 Damon Street to the West Concord Advisory Committee to complete an unexpired term to expire May 31, 2024. Timothy Whitney of 315 Lexington Road to the Historic District Commission as a designee of the Planning Board for a term to expire January 1, 2026.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Great.
Okay. So that gets us to, we've done the appointments, so it gets us to Town Managers' Report.
Okay. Thank you and good evening. As you all know, we had a significant storm come through town today. I think we fared better than some of our neighbors. At this point in time, it looks like we still have 271 residents or residents in businesses without power. That's three point, actually just changed to 283, 3.58% of the community without power. We are aware that we have limbs and trees down in certain areas and that even when the power is restored, there'll be some additional work to do. But I do commend CMLP, Public Works, Public Safety for their, their work on the storm today. I did want to give you a quick update on Jero, the project there. I did send some information out to you earlier today. We understand that the newspaper is running an article and staff did a really nice job in summarizing work that has been done and what remains and project costs to, to answer questions for that particular article. I did want to mention to you that- for that particular article. I did want to mention to you that last week, because we've been providing you updates with, on a weekly basis. Last week, the woodwork on the pavilion roof siding and trim was completed. We did circulate a photo. It looks, the work looks really terrific. Installation of the metal roof panels using another subcontractor is being scheduled before the winter shutdown. We do expect a winter shutdown within the next couple of weeks. And then we will resume in the spring. There are some pavers in the pavilion that need to be replaced, and some of the plantings need to be replaced. But with that, we expect the project to be completed. I wanted to announce that for the seventh year running, the town has received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting through the Government Finance Officers Association. This is related to our audited financial statements, only given out to a select handful of communities that meet stringent requirements in financial reporting, and we will be issuing a news release tomorrow with some additional information on that. And then a few other items that I wanted to run through. Our Firefighters Relief Association is collecting toys at both stations through December twentieth. We had a firefighter, Ian Ford, completed his in-house training. He's been assigned to Group Four and is awaiting entry into the State Firefighting Academy. On December sixth, our Assistant Fire Chiefs Latta and Whitney, along with Chief Judge, attended a meeting in Arlington with representatives from Arlington, Lexington, Lincoln, and ourselves, along with the National Park Service, as a planning activity for the two hundred and fiftieth. The Concord Friends of the Aging hosted a holiday cheer luncheon at Nishodik Country Club on December sixth. There were a hundred and seventy senior residents in attendance. The Friends of the, the Concord Friends of the Aging worked collaboratively throughout the year to provide support and programs to Concord's age sixty-plus community, and also help support the efforts of the Council on Aging. We, we did host the Concord Two-Fifty Army-Navy Tug of War. I think that was about a week and a half ago at the bridge. I think there were about a hundred in attendance, and that was in advance of the Army-Navy game that was played down in Foxborough. The ZBA held its continued public hearing on the Novo Riverside Commons Comprehensive Permit on November twenty-eighth. At this particular session of the ZBA, they reviewed architecture and sustainability measures. And they have continued the hearing to July, to January eleventh at seven PM. And at that next session on one eleven, they are going to focus on vehicle circulation and traffic analysis. That meeting will be in person at the Harvey Wheeler Community Center and also available by Zoom. The Planning Board met on November twenty-sixth, and they reviewed and finalized their own comment letter for the Novo Riverside Commons Comprehensive Permit application. They also looked at a couple of items and decided not to move forward with warrant articles to amend the zoning bylaw relative to parking, and also to site plan review. They're teeing those up for the twenty twenty-five Annual Town Meeting. Just a couple of other quick updates. There was quite a bit of information about sustainability in the packet. I just wanted to mention that Tricon Church invited our Director of Sustainability over to present on electrifying Concord through policies and practices. Senator Jamie Eldridge also invited our Sustainability Director to a meeting that he hosted to talk about the sustainability efforts in Concord. We participated in building code training sessions. There, there have been two sessions this month, a joint effort between Concord Acton and Lexington. And the purpose here is to present information to people who work in the field on the Opt-In Specialized Stretch Code, which the town of Concord has adopted. I did want to mention on December fifth, we had what I thought was a very successful water resources forum, and there's a note that we had sixty-five participants, but I think we, we maybe had sixty-five in person and others online. We had terrific presentations on drinking water, wastewater, storm management, and infrastructure. I, I just, I thought it was great, and it was a great foundation for the issues and challenges facing, and opportunities facing the community. The presentation was recorded, and it is available on MMN's YouTube channel. And quickly, if I could just mention that the library, the main library, will be closed Sunday twelve twenty-four, Monday twelve twenty-five, and then again, Sunday twelve thirty-one, and Monday one one in observance of the holidays. The Fowler Branch is closed today through Wednesday due to a carpet replacement. And I think I'll stop there, because...
So we can't have our New Year's Eve party at the library?
You cannot, because the library will be closed.
I have two questions. One is, speaking of the Army-Navy game, did we have advance notice of the F-18s flying out of Hanscom before that? That was, it was, people talk about the noise and the impact of flights out of Hanscom. I've never heard anything quite like that.
Yeah.
And I have no problem with military aircraft flying out of Hanscom, but I think that it would be good if we were notified in advance that this was happening.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, we were not notified of that. But I have heard from people, and in my own community, I see it on social media, because it was heard there as well.
Two fourteen, they went out, and they came back almost exactly an hour later. About, I think it was five of them.
And that's the second time in a few months. We had several citizens show up a few months ago to complain about, can we have somebody contact them and ask them to notify us when there's going to be a very loud or close?
I certainly can, can reach out. The, the flight, however long ago that was, that was just a scheduled flight where I, I don't want to misspeak, but the, the base was surprised by the result of that. That, that was, that's different than having a show to for, like, like we had for, for the Army-Navy game. So I, I will make that contact. The bases has always been responsive, but I don't know that they, they're necessarily proactive in, in letting us know about these events.
Typically, I think, fly out of Hanscom for these events, because it only takes about a minute and a half from them to get, get from the airfields further north.
Right. The, the Army-Navy, I, I think, may have come out of Pease Air Force Base in New Hamp, in New Hampshire.
Okay. And another question I want to ask is, do we have any update on the number of residential applications, residential exemption applications that have come in? Do we have some current numbers on that?
Yeah. The, the last I heard was thirty-four hundred.
Okay. Thank you.
So actually, I'm glad you brought that up. I saw that notice about that, I think, in the bridge or, or whatever, that the values are out. So I went to look mine up, and it's a little bit confusing. Is there a way to add on the website something about, these are the values before the exemption is subtracted, or, you know, if you've applied for it?
Yeah, I can, I, I didn't, Terri, I didn't get a chance to review that, your question.
Oh, I sent that to you by email?
You did, and, and I didn't get a chance to, to review that. But I can talk to Anthony about that tomorrow.
Great.
Yeah, I got a phone call from somebody just today about their taxes, and I said to them, it probably did not reflect the residential exemption.
Well, right, because you don't know if the person applied or not.
Well, he did apply.
Right. But the website doesn't know who applied, so it should just be clarified.
You have to, you have to do math. Column X in the spreadsheet that was over there is the total assessed value. And then you have to do math from there. You have to know that the residential exemption amount is one hundred and forty-two nine seventy-one.
Well, that's what I'm saying. They should put all that on the website, so people, nobody's gonna remember that.
Right.
Better still, it would be have something in the envelope that goes out with the bill.
Right.
That explains it.
And that's another question I have. Are we, usually the bills go out, I guess, January first, to be due February first? How is the Assessor's Office doing? Are they going to be able to get the bills out on time, or they're gonna be running behind, or?
They are not, they are on time.
Wow.
On time or early.
Impressive.
Not before Christmas.
Very good. Good job.
However, people need to know that the, the February first bill is the, is, is a final bill.
Right.
And that's the one, if you have a question with, you have to file.
Right.
I, I would like to thank the Assessor's Office, though. It's good news to hear that the bills are gonna go out, because we asked a lot of them this year, and and they delivered, and so I'm, I'm grateful.
Very impressive. Great.
Okay. Anything else? All right, it's my turn now?
Your turn.
Just wanted to report on a couple of legal issues that have come up. One was the Hanson case on the MBTA zoning, which I don't know if any of you were familiar with that case. That was a case in which the town of Hanson
Holden.
Holden, sorry.
You had me confused there. Okay, right.
Decided that because of what the Section three A said about the benefits that would be lost if they fail to comply, they said they, they could do, they could do very well without those benefits, and were not gonna comply. And lawsuit was brought against them by the Central Middlesex Housing Advocacy Group on behalf of various agencies and various, actually, individuals who were in need of housing. And the, the both sides of that case were well represented. The town was well represented by their attorneys. And the Central Middlesex Advocacy Group was represented by a group of people from Brown and Rudnick. And the case went to summary judgment, was decided about a week ago, and it was dismissed for lack of standing on the part of the plaintiffs. No decision was made on the merits of the case. It was dismissed. And the request of the, the request of the advocates was that the court declare that the that the ability to enforce the MBTA zoning requirements went beyond what was stated in Section three A, namely eligibility for those three programs. And but that was, that was not decided at all in that case, and there is, at this point, I don't know if there's any other litigation. The Attorney General's Office and no state agency joined or intervened in that case, I think probably for strategic reasons. Another case of interest to us was one that I think I had circulated, which was the the case of Milton versus the FAA on the the fact that the FAA had changed the flight, the approach pattern for Logan Airport to concentrate far more of the traffic over the town of Milton. The town of Milton brought suit against the FAA, and it went all the way up to the First Circuit Court of Appeals, and the and the, and the First Circuit said, in dismissing Milton's claim, that they did not have standing to object to policies, procedures, and so on, of the FAA in terms of flight patterns and so on. Now, I think that's instructive to us, because it means that any approach that we may want to take with regard to Hanscom really is not gonna be successful if it deals with FAA noise standards, because that was one of the things that was brought up in the Milton case. So even if it, even if, as the, in the Milton case, they, the town relied on the National Environmental Policy Act as a basis for their suit. And the FAA's own noise noise standards, and it, the, the court decided, and I think quite definitively, at a very high level, it's the only higher level is the U.S. Supreme Court, that towns did not have that authority, which just emphasizes the fact that the only control that we have over what happens at Hanscom is the construction part of the process, and is the building, which can be controlled at the state level. And what is done with that construction or without that construction is pretty much out of our hands. I had some conversations with one of our state reps at the League of Women Voters Holiday Party, and the, and I asked about the, the prospects for state funding for the two hundred and fiftieth. And the response I got was not encouraging. And particularly in terms of any potential timing for those for knowing what we might get, because it's not just a matter of getting the funding, it's getting a commitment for the funding in time that we can plan activities based on the funds that are gonna be available. So I think the assumption still has to be that primarily we're, we're pretty much on our own with regard to funding this event, and therefore we have to budget accordingly. There is a warrant article, I think it may be on our agenda for the two fiftyth committee for an appropriation with the town meeting. And that's just part of the process, and we'll see where that goes. I think I think that's about it for me for today. And I won't, I won't comment further on the, the the role we play in putting stuff on the town meeting warrant. That's a discussion for another day. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
What's, what's next?
Liaison reports.
Liaison reports, okay.
I'll go first, if that's, if that's okay.
You may, yes.
I'm gonna start with the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee met last week. The first thing is that they tabled the article to issue one guideline instead of several guidelines. Remember, we, that was being discussed. And they had thought of bringing an article to town meeting to enable them to issue one guideline instead of three, but they tabled that, so we will not see an article this year on the warrant for that. The schools presented their preliminary budgets. CPS right now is eighty-seven thousand dollars over the finance guideline. And the high school is two hundred and five thousand dollars over the preliminary guideline that the Finance Committee has issued. They also heard from the two hundred and fiftieth committee about the warrant article for the use of free cash. It was a discussion. At this point in time, they didn't offer a decision or any kind of support. It was basically just a Q and A regarding how that money would be spent. Moving on to the CMLB, they did several things relative to the rates. They had a hearing, so the rates are set, and I already talked about that at our last meeting. They also went around and polled members as a show of support or comments for the solar task force warrant article that we'll hear Dean talk about later, and there was unanimous support from the members. Again, they did not take a formal vote, but they went around and expressed their unanimous support for that warrant article. West Concord Cultural District Commission is putting on, is producing a video of businesses in West Concord that will feature retailers and shops and restaurants, and that's just gonna be that will feature retailers and shops and restaurants, and that's just gonna be a fun thing. And it's promotional to get people, to get more people in West Concord. The Planning Board, I'll simply add a little bit to what Carrie said earlier. I don't know if you mentioned this, Carrie, but they had been thinking of bringing a change to parking requirements to the town meeting, and they decided not to do that because it's a lot more complicated than they thought. And they're not gonna be able to have something clean in time for town meeting. So that's gonna be deferred until the FY twenty-five town meeting. And then finally, I think several of us went to the Housing Roundtable. And the things that I took away from that was that the Affordable Housing Trust has a balance of three-point-one million. They've already allocated from that seven-hundred thousand, and out of that seven-hundred thousand, we'll be adding only two units to the SHI. And that seven-hundred thousand is in addition to money that's already been raised. So these are very expensive units. So if you take the three-point-one they had, you take out the seven-hundred thousand, that brings their balance to two-point-four million. They mentioned that they're looking for five-hundred thousand from CPC and possibly five-hundred thousand from ARPA. They're still working on having a more predictable and reliable source of funding. And that would be coming not from our home rule petitions, but from something, the governor passed an Affordable Homes Act, which is, if it's passed by the legislature, would bring a revenue stream of two million dollars a year to the trust. And then finally, at the end of the meeting, we started talking about extending the ta, the residential tax exemption to year-round renters. And Keith Bergman mentioned that, again, buried in a law that was passed, there's something that we might be able to take advantage of. So more work to be done, but we made, publicly agreed that we would look into doing that next year.
I can be very quick. So I reported last time. I attended the Concord Carlisle Human Rights Tea and the Freedom Award. I can't remember the exact name. Freedom Award was presented to Dignity in Asylum. It's a very nice event. The Stormwater, I went to the meeting Carrie already talked about. And then at the Public Works Meeting, they, the Public Works Commission decided to bring this to town meeting in two phases. So in this coming town meeting, 2024, they're going to bring an article to set up the framework for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. And then in 2025, we will set it up with specific rate structures. And finally, the 2229 Main Street Task Force is on track. They want to come in in May to brief the Select Board and then have their draft report to us in the summer with our final report October thirty-first. That's it for me.
Okay, I'll go.
This is Linda. I can go next.
Sure.
Okay, good. Mary did a good job of commenting already on the Housing Roundtable. And in addition to that, I've attended several meetings of the Affordable Housing Trust and the Concord Housing Authority, all related to activity that is specified in the Housing Production Plan and some of which was mentioned at that meeting for the Housing Roundtable. I attended the Legal Women Voters Climate Impact of Private Jet Expansion. And I'm mentioning that because Senator Barrett was there, as well as Neil Rasmussen, Chuck Collins, and Michael McDonald, and one other person. Barrett said that they've investigated a whole number of avenues on which they could challenge the Hanscom expansion. But he feels that it's really an uphill battle, was one of his comments. But regarding the climate impact of the activity there, he said, "Go for it and continue to make noise." So I just wanted to comment on that. The, the Legal Women Voters also held a forum recently on the Warner's Pond update with an open discussion. And Delia Kaye was one of the major speakers there and commented on being responsive to some of the comments that she heard and that on December twenty-seventh, she expects that the final charge and membership for that committee will be discussed. That's December twenty-seventh. Speakers as well, but I just thought that date was important for all of us to be aware of. I also attended the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals, this, both of which have occurred, I guess, in the last week or so. And I've been particularly interested there in terms of what's happening at the Elm Street develop, proposed development where Paparazzi is. And I think there are a lot of good discussion, very complicated. There are some transportation issues that MassDOT has to rule on and certain approvals that have to occur before certain things, other things can proceed. So that, that's to be followed and very interesting. The other item that was of interest, particular interest, was the Concord Housing Development Corporation's proposal for the Assabett River Bluff development at four-oh-six Marlboro Road. That's been continued to January eighteenth for additional discussion. What they did, walk through an initial outline of that entire plan for what they hope to do there. And the Planning Board, in particular, raised some questions that they need to follow up on. And then the CBA had a number of interesting discussions, again, very complicated, some of the cases that are coming to them. But in particular, I'll mention the Selberg Development, where they're looking to add some residential and, and retail structure at one-sixty-six Comm Ave. And there was a, Council was there representing that project. And there were, there was a lot of good dialogue about some additional material that's needed or, and timeline for when some of this material is gonna come in. And clarity about all the material that's already on the website. And that if, that's been continued to February eighth, as I recall. And if not, they may have to open a new application. So I think I'll stop there. Thank you.
You said that there were complexities with the former Paparazzi site. Do you have any elaboration on what some of those issues are that affect the development of that property?
Yes, I understand that it, well, I can just comment that at this point, my understanding is that there are now three restaurants of varying levels that have been secured for that site. And that they're concerned about a left-hand turn that would need to be made because of the potential traffic flow at certain hours. But the town has no jurisdiction over that decision. That has to go to MassDOT. So that's, that's a summary of the detail I can give you at this point, Henry.
All right, thank you. So it's essentially traffic and, and, and septic capacity? Is that what it boils down to? Because isn't that what the problem was before with the septic system? It wasn't suitable, or have the capacity?
Yeah, the septic, that was when there was an urgent care facility that was projected to be in there. But they no longer are gonna be part of the current plan. So apparently, that changed some things in terms of the septic.
Okay. We'll follow this with interest. It's a, it's a very, I think, it's a, it's a, it's a key location in terms of the, the entrance to the town of Concord. And we ought to be thinking not only about how, what will work there commercially, but what would be a suitable gateway for the town.
Yes, and also, it's been added to the MBA zoning communities map.
It's in the, it's in the overnight district, yeah.
All right. Anybody else?
Maybe picking up on that spot, the Climate Action Committee discussed Route Two crossings initiative as a potential warrant article, but they've decided that they're gonna do some further work on that, but probably in conjunction with the Transportation Committee because we all recognize that, that crossing Route Two, particularly between that area and West Concord is, is a problem as it is in other places where Route Two improved crossings would be, would be better. Also, the, we'll, we'll cover this later, but the CAC is, is recommending that we support the fossil-free bylaw amendments that we're gonna talk about in a little bit. At their, at their most recent meeting, they came up with that. I attended the Historical Commission meeting primarily to try to encourage the sooner rather than later discussion about the disposition of the Tersentenniary signs with the DEI Commission, and they expressed support to do that. But along the way, there was a very interesting discussion about the potential demolition permit for the Sanborn School, which related to the middle school construction project and the fact that there might have been a significant some structural, some significance to the structure because of its relationship to Gropius, the architect in Lincoln. And whether he was involved. So there, there may be some preservation activity going on. The good news for the middle school building project is that they did not issue a demolition delay, which might have impacted the middle school schedule. So whatever, you know, preservation or documentation activity may take place as a result of their, of their investigation into that will run concurrent with the construction schedule. And so we're not expecting any delay. Gropius.
Yes, Gropius, yeah.
Gropius designed?
His firm designed it, and the school was designed, apparently, in the last couple of years of his life. So it's not obvious that he actually worked on it. But there was some concern that.
Architects Collaborative, was that what it was, Cambridge?
Yeah, in Lincoln, I think.
Oh, they were Cambridge.
I think they were Cambridge, yeah.
His house was in Lincoln.
Gropius was a professor at the school design.
Yes.
He lived in Lincoln, right?
So it was just an interesting thing that I wasn't expecting. So show up for meetings that you're not expected, you may learn something that you never knew. At any rate, the, the good news for the middle school construction project is that, is that it's not a delay, but it's an interesting fact nonetheless. Other personnel bylaw, we heard about, so I won't cover that anymore. The Natural Resources Commission, it does continue to work on the Warner's Pond Task Force Charge Revision. Three of that charge is now published on the NRC page under the current meeting documents for those folks who might want to look at that and engage in the conversation, which is going to continue, as Linda mentioned, on, on December twenty-seventh. The Recreation Commission is also reviewing their strategic plan tomorrow night. And I think that's most of what I had. Oh, also, what came up at the Historical Commission was they, they are entertaining the possibility of asking us to approve additional associate members. There's a, some terminology between associate and alternate members, which may come before us. And there seemed to be some real confusion in, in their dialogue around the dirty, the duties of a clerk on a committee in terms of creating minutes and so forth. So that might be something that we would want to cover in some more detail at the next chair's meeting because I have seen that a number of committees do handle clerking and minutes somewhat differently. And I think we can continue to remind ourselves of.
Those committees have town staff.
Right.
And then.
They're, they're apparently in the, in the, their routine process has been to let town staff do the minutes, but they don't name a clerk at the meeting to review those minutes. And so they're sort of proceeding without a clerk. And I, I have to assume that what's really happening is the chair, who happened to be absent at this particular meeting, ends up doing those duties that we would normally recognize as a clerk. But I think it's worth it to clarify for, for committees that there should be a, a committee member acting as clerk in any given meeting.
Right. It does, I'm liaison to a number of committees that they have a rotating clerk. But there is a clerk for each meeting.
For each meeting.
That's right.
And they, they seem to be under the impression that that was not necessary. And it was a lengthy meeting, but I encourage them to seek guidance from the town clerk. Historical Commission.
Historical.
Yeah. I guess the, the last point I would make, maybe, is that they also spent some time on the, on the historical preservation plan and the effort that's coming up in that. And I think that for those who are interested in this discussion about whether or not there's any need for changes to charges of the Historical Commission and the Historic Districts Commission to recognize that there is an ongoing effort to create a historic, an update to the historic preservation plan, which would then potentially, you know, impact the goals and the, and the activities for both of those groups. So that might be a good place to park that discussion about whether those charges need updating or not.
Okay.
Can I add one quick thing from the Housing Roundtable? We also learned that the Junction Village RFP is going out next month for family housing. So that's in play as well.
Family housing, is any, any number of units?
No, it's a hundred-and-fifty percent AMI, but they didn't, they, they're gonna wait and see what they get back from the developers.
Okay.
That's it.
That's every, it's, Carrie, you?
No, I already went.
You already went? Was I awake?
No, I, I went so fast, you slept through it.
Okay, so, okay, then we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the, dealing with the discovery or public records requests that have been made on behalf of the town to Massport with regard to, to the Hanscom Field Development.
Right.
We engaged Gregor McGregor's firm to do the initial request for, for documents. They made the request, and they did not get a satisfactory response, but we did get a pile of documents. But it wasn't complete. And so, and, and I think I have been serving as the liaison with the attorneys on this. But we've come to the point where a decision needs to be made as to the strategy going forward in, in terms of whether or not we appeal to the Secretary of State or we appeal to the Superior Court. And what our goals are in doing that, and what we can achieve, and what it's gonna cost us to do. And so it was my suggestion that the board delegate that relationship, the management of that relationship to the, the town official who is in charge of administering legal affairs, namely our town manager. So that's what's before our board, and I don't know what Carrie has to say about that, if we try to throw that in her lap.
That's fine. Just for reference, Henry, I think you mentioned we set aside seventy-five-hundred dollars. We've spent about five thousand of that. The way that I read the correspondence that came through is that the firm is saying the appeal would be included within the original budget.
That's the way I read it.
Yeah. So it's, it's not an additional cost at this point, but we don't, we don't know yet whether an appeal will be needed or whether it makes sense to, to file an appeal.
Right.
They, they have not complied in the opinion of, of our legal representative with the public records law. That said, we don't have to appeal. We could wait to see what their response is. is, um, but the, the, if there is to be an appeal, January 18th is the, is the appeal date, so there's some time.
See, I, the reason I thought it needed a little more flexibility than be, having to, having us deal with it, our, our meetings every two weeks, is the fact that it's an evolving situation, and it's a question of the degree of compliance, uh, and, um, and I don't know whether the deadline shifts every time they comply with a piece of it, or what, what the details are about the impact on, um, the impact on the deadlines that they're dribbling and drabbing out just bits and pieces of information.
The, the deadline doesn't shift, they, they miss the deadline to file a sufficient response. They have provided some documents, but they, they have not answered the response in full. And the answer to the response could be, we need X amount of time to, to provide the documents. This happens to us on a regular basis, that we're not able to comply, to provide the documents within the time, but you have to identify what you need to comply within the original, um, compliance period.
So that we do have that deadline we're facing regardless of-
But the, the 18th would be the deadline to, to file an appeal on the response that we've received so far.
And then as far as the cost goes, the cost that is fixed with the attorneys is their fees, but the Massport is entitled to charge us for retrieval and copying.
Which they failed to do.
Which they did not do.
Yeah.
But they did supply a heap of documents without, uh, without sending us a bill.
Because they didn't copy anything, it's electronic, so.
The, and the fees that they can charge for public records are nominal, they're, they're not, they could need to have an attorney review their documents, but they're not charging that rate, they're charging a much lower rate. And I know this because this happens to us on a regular basis.
Right.
Okay.
So if we go back though to the whole point why we're doing this to begin with, it was, if I underst- if, if my memory is right, it was really as a delaying tactic? Is that what, I mean, we're not going to stop it by asking for records, um, what we're hoping to do, I thought, was to delay.
No, we want to get the information too. There's a lot of information about-
Who's going to use that information?
Well, that's a good question, is that, uh, and we may get to that when we talk about the, um, the $6,500 participation in the particulate study. And the question is, um, we really don't have a strategy in terms of, we don't really have a strategy, so we don't really need, we don't really know what we need to do to implement that strategy, we're just kind of, um, you know, just kind of-
Fishing?
Fishing, yeah, I guess.
Well, wait a minute, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm uncomfortable, um-
Yeah, we are.
-having this conversation in open session if you're going to make those kind of comments, so I don't necessarily agree with that.
Okay, well, I mean, the point is we have to make some decisions-
Right.
-about, um, spending money and doing things-
Right.
-that advance this, if we have to have those things.
Well, we had him here, remember, and he gave us, and then I think, I remember Diane Proctor stood up and asked, what was the value of that? And I thought he answered her pretty directly that the value was to delay.
Well, to find basis for that. So the question that comes up in my mind is when we, if we decide to authorize a town manager to determine appropriate action, is that inclusive of determining whether or not we have received documents on which we might want to act, or when would we know that we had gotten everything that we should know, and are we asking the town manager to determine that, or is there somebody else who determines that?
That's a lot to ask.
Right, there's no way for us to know if we've gotten all the documents, we have to take their word for it.
My understanding is we were, we were going to be depending on the expertise of the attorney's firm that we hired to try and determine whether there might be some actions that we could take based on the documents that we were going to receive.
Right.
And they say they are reviewing them.
Okay.
Um, and also, uh, I've had requests for, to distribute them, and so they're being distributed, because they are public documents, to, um-
H F A C members.
And, and anybody else who wants to see them, perhaps in the hope that somebody who spent the time to actually go through them in detail will find some, uh, facts that will be helpful.
Well, I have to say, I, I looked through them for 10 minutes today, and I learned a lot. There was a lot of stuff in there that I had never heard before.
But is it useful as far as getting the-
Well, um, I'd like, I'd like to talk with, um, our attorney about it, and, uh, let's, I don't know, in open session, I don't want to talk about it.
So my question though, relative to the action that we're talking about taking here, is are we asking the town manager to determine appropriate action regarding whether or not, uh, the public records request has been adequately responded to and the, and the mechanics and process of that, but withholding or not asking the town manager to discern what some strategy related to the information that we receive is-
It's A, not B.
A, not B.
Correct.
That's, I just wanted to be clear on that.
That's right, good question.
For, for the town manager's concern as well as my own.
About whether it's just to administer the, the freedom of information process-
Right.
-but not to, not to make decisions about the strategy, about what to do with the informations, or what further information we need, that, that is not part of what we're talking about.
Carrie, will you come to us if it goes over the $7,500? Is that part of what we're agreeing to tonight?
Yes, because we, that, that was brought to this board because it was not part of the budget, so that's the budget that's been-
Okay, so you would, you would come to us?
Set. So just for purposes of clarification, I'm looking at the charter, I'm looking at, um, section, section nine H, that says the town manager, subject to the approval of the select board, shall have the authority to prosecute, defend, and compromise all litigation to which the town is a party. So you're saying you're, this action would be your approval of that, so there's no-
I think it's already in the charter.
On, on, well, it says subject, subject to approval, so with this, with this item related to the public records request and the potential to appeal it, this action would be your approval, so there wouldn't be another approval needed on the public records.
Right, unless it starts to get into a strategy discussion, and then we would want to be involved.
Right, and, and it won't, because we're talking about, about the public records.
We're talking about-
And I can tell you, I'm inclined to not appeal the public records request, but I, I would like to talk to counsel first. Even though, even though he, counsel is saying that it is included in that budget, I'm not sure, um, that it, it makes sense to spend money to appeal something that they will eventually comply with, even if it's not within the ti- the timetable that's required.
I agree, I agree with that.
That's good.
Can I ask a question about that? If they don't eventually comply, then we can just file again, right? Our, our, let's say our deadline goes by January 18th, and now in March or April, they still haven't complied, we can just-
I think the board would need to have a conversation in executive session to talk about the, what strategy we're employing by requesting public records.
Okay.
Okay, so we ready for a motion? Okay. Move to authorize the town manager to determine appropriate action regarding Massport response to public records request for documents relating to the Hanscom North Airfield project, and to direct special counsel accordingly. Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Mr. Howell.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay, that brings us to the next item, which, which we have half discussed already, which is the, um, is, uh, participating as a paying sponsor to the, uh, study that's proposed for the particulate emissions, uh, from the aircraft at, um, from Hanscom. So, uh, again, um, please, present.
Hi, I'm Mark Giddings, 474 Barris Mill Road, I'm the Concord representative to the Hanscom Field Advisory Council. We've put forth to you, I hope you've looked at it, a request for funding of $6,250 to be a contributor to a small particulate study that will be conducted by Professor Hutter from Tufts University. Um, as I think, if you read some of the literature that I gave to you, she did a terrific presentation to one of our meetings a month or two ago, we were very impressed with what she had done at both, um, LAX and at Logan Airport to study the particulate matter around those airports. We thought it was particularly appropriate that we do something like that at Hanscom. Um, you know, remember, yes, I have my hand out, but remember that we also give the town $100,000, uh, the town gets $100,000 a year from Hanscom Field in terms of revenue, so I think the $6,250 bucks is sort of foot money, I mean, I, I don't have it in my pocket, and I know it still comes out of the budget. The other three towns have agreed to do it, Lincoln, Bedford, and Lexington. The study itself, if you looked at the information, costs about $50,000. She's going to do it on her own, she lives in Lexington, she has a vested interest in doing the study, she's excited about doing it. If it went through Tufts, it would be a lot more than that, okay, so, anyways, that's my story. Questions?
Can I just mention that the jet fuel excise is, is more in the $300,000 to $400,000 range per year than 100? It may have been 100 at one, one point, but it is.
I was told it was 100 per town, I, I thought it was 400,000.
I think, I think it's about a million-
Okay.
-for the four towns.
And, you know, um, I'm not going to speak about the North Field Project, I think everybody understands the, the report on that is still way off in the future, we're thinking maybe March, they had talked about maybe having it for us in, in the fall, um, and until that comes in, I don't think we really know what's going to happen there, okay, so, um, and that's not what this is about. We think this would be a nice benchmark to have, as I think if you read the publication, the information I gave you, so that down the road, if there is more flights in and out of there, we would be able to say, listen, you're contributing to the pollution, particularly things like lead, we've never done a study on lead there, and I think that would be really interesting to know how much lead these aircrafts are giving off, which is hazardous to our health.
Have the other towns paid the $6,250 already?
I'm sorry?
Have the other towns paid the $6,250?
They've all agreed.
They've all agreed except for Concord.
That's correct.
Well, I think we should go ahead and participate with the other towns, I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Is that, it's not for, this is, is this to have it be on the town meeting warrant?
No.
No.
It would be, well, do, how, how do we, um, how do we make, where does the money come from?
Good question.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons it's, it's in front of you, because this is another request that was not contemplated in the budget. It doesn't mean that we can't find the funding for it, but we're trying to be proactive in, in bringing these things, and actually, I'm, I'm going to talk to Anthony about maintaining a tally of all of the things that we approved, just so, just so we're aware of it. Personally, I'd rather spend the money here than on a public records request. I, I think it's, you know, it's, it's not the same, but it's, I, I do see the benefit in this.
And is this the kind of appropriation that might go through the Finance Committee process for, and I'm forgetting the exact term, but-
The Reserve Fund.
Reserve Fund.
No, this would never pass. The, the Reserve Fund is for emergency and unforeseen.
This is an unforeseen?
I guess so.
They, um, our Finance Committee, these don't come up too often, so we have a relatively new Finance Committee, but, no, they, they lean more toward emergency versus unforeseen.
So this is Linda, you know, I, I have a question, and that is, you know, what is the outcome that is expected here in terms of strategically, what do we gain from doing this study? Um, I, I certainly understand that we're looking for, um, ways to impact the activ- the planned activity over there, but I'm, given what we've learned, um, from Michael Barrett and some others about how difficult this is, and, and, and we've also learned that, um, we don't have the ability to contest some of the decisions from, uh, the F A A in terms of flights and so forth, so I, I just, if someone could just give me a little more clarity about what is the outcome we're expecting from this?
Linda, we're expecting two things, one is it gives us a benchmark for what the small particulate and the pollution that's being emitted by the aircraft taking off and landing at Hanscom, that's one, which we think is critical, but it also gives us-
How will that help us though?
It, it gives us another quiver, an arrow in our quiver against further expansion. I think what's going to happen there, my opinion is it's going to be a negotiation of what transpires with the North Field Project. We're negotiating with Massport, not with the F A A, we don't have a lot of control, as everybody said about the F A A, the noise, we've talked about that repeatedly, it's all within F A A guidelines, but we do have some control over what Massport does.
Well, but-
But again, that's, that's my, that's my opinion.
A negotiation point, okay, go ahead.
But what, but what, but what, this study would tell us what the situation is today.
That's correct.
And I'm not clear what, how that helps us, because we're still talking about making predictions about how much worse things will get if we have more flights, but this, this won't help us, this won't give us information as to how much the increase will be, and what the impact it will be, it will just be what we have now, and if it is a benchmark, it will only be a useful benchmark if the, in fact, the development takes place and we have the higher level of activity and more flights, and then at that point, we will know it's 10 times as bad as it was now, but by, but then it will be too late to do anything about it.
Well, not really though, because, I mean, it's a baseline, but-
The only thing we can do is stop the development.
Is it, but assuming that, that things change, or there's claims that they've been mitigated somehow, it gives us a baseline set of data to which we can compare the future resulting. This would, this would have to be something that would be expected to be done more than once, but I for one agree that there, there's some sense in, in knowing what today's situation is, and then taking, you know, assuming that more flights do take place, then it's possible to, to use that information to assess a level of impact that we wouldn't be able to assess if we don't have a baseline.
I also think it's an argument against expansion at the North Field Project, whether, you know, whether that'll have merit to win the day, I doubt it, but at least it's another arrow in our quiver.
The, the other thing that I think was in the materials that was quite clear is that the, the, the so-called data, or what, what's available today is models of assumed particulate matter, and it would be very interesting to find out through direct observation whether those models are accurate. And if it turns out, for example, that those models today understate the level of particulate matter that's, that is, that is in the vicinity of the airfield, that could be an argument for slowing the course of development of that airfield. If it turns out that the models are overstating it, then of course it's an, it's an argument in the exact opposite direction, but we'll, we'll never know unless, you know, unless it's measured.
And you're getting a $50,000 project for $6,250.
It's true, too.
It is small money, and I do think we want to cooperate with the towns around us, um, being an outlier on this one for such a small amount of money doesn't seem worthwhile to me.
All right.
I think that's a good point, Mary.
Thank you, Linda.
In fact, I was at the league event, or, or, or the Hanscom event that was cosponsored by us, actually, and this question came up, and there was kind of some shock in the room that Concord had not yet participated, and the other three towns hadn't, they're waiting for us. It was embarrassing, honestly.
Are you ready for a motion?
Well, I'm just, I'll just add that I think that it's, um, that if we, that in the absence of a strategy, and in an absence of a, um, an act, of the absence of a strategy, it's premature to go out and gather information that might not be useful in moving that strategy forward. And so I, I think this is just, I know that people have different opinions about what the value of it may be, but I, I really can't focus on how this isn't something that actually should be determined after we have a strategy and we know what we're going to need, and then we go out and get the information we need. So I would be reluctant to approve it.
There is a hand raised on Zoom. There is a hand raised.
You want a public comment?
Do you want to comment?
Oh, it's Pamela Drit.
Good evening, Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green, Unit 4. This kind of scientific information is essential, I believe. It is not something that will ever be done by the agencies that want to expand. The only place we'll get it is through this kind of independent stuff. The agencies that expand use bad data all the time. This is the only way we can counter that. It doesn't matter if we never use it, we should do it.
Thank you. All right, is, is there a motion?
I'll move. Move to participate in the air quality study at Hanscom North Airfield and contribute $6,250 as outlined in the select board meeting packet.
Second.
Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
No.
Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Then we move on to the license renewals.
Shannon.
I'd like to thank Mr. Giddings for his work with the, with the Hanscom Airfield.
Yes, Chris Elliott.
Well, I think Carrie already sent this in.
Yeah, Chris Elliott will be distributing to the committee now.
Yeah, and it's, it's probably about a couple of hundred pages of stuff.
Will I follow some green?
Probably randomly selected stuff.
Thank you.
Okay.
Am I on?
You are.
All right.
If you're not, get on.
So we have our 2024 annual license renewals here, just to quickly note, but this is all in my memo, that we launched permit eyes for the select board licenses this fall. We just have to get one more license on there, which is the tour guide license, which we amended with the select board just about a month ago. The system significantly streamlined our internal review process, and most importantly, I think, allows for online payment, which really makes things a lot easier. Just to quickly note, there were three business closures over the year. They were Asian Gourmet Sushi House, Chang'an, and Paparazzi, so that freed up three all-alcohol liquor licenses. Any questions?
The ones that are in yellow, what's the story with them?
Yes, they just submitted at the 11th hour and weren't in the original memo that I sent out on Friday.
So they're in that packet that I signed?
They're in now, though.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any further ones that are expected that you have them off?
No, potentially, there may be some tour guide licenses. I mentioned to you guys in my email that sometimes those come in late, but there are no businesses or restaurants that are going to be late.
So you mentioned the Chang'an and the paparazzi licenses that are terminated?
And Asian Gourmet Sushi House, there's three. That's right next to paparazzi.
So they're all, they all are just non-renewals?
Yes.
And so they go back into the inventory?
Yeah.
How many, how many licenses do we have available?
So with that, that will be seven all alcohol available, but that, we still have the Bandoleros application pending with the ABCC, so once that approved-
Which one?
Bandoleros. So once that's approved, it should be six all alcohol will be available.
Good jobs, thanks for staying on top of this.
Really, very good.
It's a lot of work.
Sounds like an opportunity for more restaurants in town.
Yes.
Absolutely. Well, we've got those three at, at the paparazzi.
And so those all go back so that they would be issued as new licenses, not as-
Not as transfers.
As, not as transfers.
Ready for a motion? Ready?
Move to approve the 2024 annual select board license renewals as outlined in the select board meeting packet.
Second.
Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you. All right, and we go on to update on financial year 2025 budget and discuss consolidated town budget article for annual town meeting. Seems like you can do that in three minutes, right?
Got it. Anything you want. Good evening, Board, Anthony Insaldi, Chief Financial Officer, to talk about, give you a little update where we stand with the FY25 budget, so.
Want the slides, too?
Yeah, please, just for reference. So this year, I would say we're probably not as far along as, as Concan might be used to, and I think that's just with the transition, with me coming aboard and other interim staff leaving. So we've asked the department heads to really do a lot in a short amount of time. So right now, the chart up there that you see reflects where we stand right now. So in comparison to the FY24 to the FY25 guidelines that the finance committee set at their November meeting, their guidelines set a town operating increase at 3.26. Right now, we're above, 6.82 above FinCom guidelines, which is not uncommon at this point, because this is the department's request that's really been unvetted by finance team as well as the town manager. So there's some work to, to do, and, and with the tier one capital, there was an increase from FY24 to FY25, really, from my understanding, restores it to the post-pandemic, when you took a little step back during the pandemic. So we're happy to see that that number goes up. It still doesn't reflect truly what we have for projects, but we, we do appreciate that increase that the guidelines that FinCom set. So with that, we're still slightly ahead with our tier one capital request at 2.3 million or 7.42. The next slide is, just talks about a couple of drivers that we've identified right now, and again, there's a lot more work to do with this, but we have salary reserves, salary reserves and about $113,000 for unsettled collective bargaining agreements. The winter maintenance or snow and ice, as some may refer to it as, is an increase in $366,000. Ceremonies and celebrations is an increase of $160,000 for the 250th celebration. Assessing request, a $90,000 increase, which reflects a new position and some software upgrades. Senior Services has a $200,000, $200,000 adjustment to personnel, which we still need to find out what the request is there. Inspections, $140,000 increase, which reflects the additional hours for plumbing inspector and a part-time building inspector.
I have a question, Anthony.
Sure.
For the ceremonies and celebrations, that's 160 incremental, that's an increase of 160?
I think that's new. It should be, right, Carrie, is it the new budget request item?
It's, it's, it's an increase of 125 or 150, I can't, I can't remember. And this is a one-time increase for the 250th celebration.
Well, the reason I'm looking at that is I thought when we had the 250th committee in here, we asked them, was there any money in the general fund to fund some of their, and I think the money they showed for, for the parade, actually, they said was for other events besides the 250th. So now I see that, in fact, there is money in the general fund for the 250th.
Yeah, so they, I, I think they were pretty clear when they were here-
Yeah.
-that the increment for the parade, they were requesting in the town's operating budget, and what they were showing in their events were for things other than the incremental increase in the parade.
So I don't know-
Can I, wait, Carrie?
Go ahead, Mary.
So in other words, we are funding some of the 250th in the general fund. That's what I'm getting at. Are we?
That, that is the request. What I can tell you is, I, I can't fit this inside of the guideline. So I think what we would propose to you when we come back next time is free cash or something for that $125,000. It doesn't make sense for it to be in our budget anyway, because then-
Right.
-it will just go down.
Right, that's what I was going to say. I don't really think it should be in the guideline and in the operating budget, and then it's, this other article that we're looking at for the 250th doesn't include all the costs, so it's-
You're right.
-confusing for the public.
You're right.
It's not apples to apples. I think we should move it where it belongs, and-
The 350 doesn't include this.
Yeah, the way to think about it is that there's a Patriots' Day celebration every year.
Right.
There are public ceremonies and celebrations every year at some baseline level, and in 2025, they're going to be significantly larger than any year around it.
That's right.
And therefore, they should be funded as, as a one-time item for that specific year, over and above whatever is going on.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
What I'm wondering is, is it coming out of the general fund, or is it part of the 250th celebrations budget?
Well, I'm, I'm saying it should be in the 250th, and it should, and this budget should just have the baseline amount, 40,000 or whatever, and all the extra for the 250th, I think, should be included in the article.
I do, too.
Okay.
Yep, appreciate the feedback.
Another question I have is about the senior services. $200,000, sounds like a huge amount of personnel over there. I'm wondering if that includes the van?
No, it, it doesn't include the van, and we agree with you, 200,000 seems like a lot of money, and that's like-
That sounds like, because there's a lot of part-time, it sounds like 10 part-time people or something.
Yeah, it didn't make sense to us, but the, the next slide really goes through what out, the, the timeline is for the remainder of the budget process, which really includes meeting with department heads to understand what's the request. And we do have an interim COA director, so it just may be-
Okay. And one other quick comment about their budget. I know they're looking for a van.
Yes.
And that might be in the tier one or-
It's in the tier one capital.
And I know that the transportation committee is looking at ways to have vans going around town, so there might be a way to achieve both of them and even have a revenue source. And so, so when you're talking to them, you might want to see if they'd be open to discussing that.
Sure, yeah, and I'm familiar, Keith Furman and I worked on Cross Town Connect project, where we used our van for COA, and so-
Perfect.
Totally know what you're saying, yes.
Yep.
So the next slide just talks about the timeline. So between tomorrow and the 29th of December, we're going to be meeting with department heads and discussing what their requests and what their asks were, and so we have a better understanding. We plan on coming back to you on January 2nd to give you an update, which we really hope is closer to the guidelines, if not beneath the guidelines. Also, at that January 2nd meeting, a discussion regarding proposed fee structure increases for ambulance as well as building permits.
Yep.
And with a final update to the select board on January 15th, and that final update to the finance committee on January 18th of '24.
So that's really great that you're discussing the fee structures. I've been like a broken record about that, that's great. And will you be also looking at the formulas for the enterprise funds to see?
And direct costs?
Yep.
Yeah, we're going to be looking at that-
Great.
-with the process, so.
And my final comment is, it's January 15th day, that's the holiday, Martin Luther King Day, so-
January 16th.
Because we're not, we're not meeting that week.
Are you meeting on January?
When is the second meeting in January?
We're meeting the 8th.
Oh, the 8th.
The 2nd and 8th and the 2nd, for January means.
Okay.
We'll, we'll expect to come back to you on the 8th, then.
So the other thing we had talked about was relooking at the pilot agreements, and I know that you had planned to look at that like after town meeting, because that's a big discussion. So we looked at, talking about the fee structure, the chargebacks, and the pilots. So you'll, you'll hopefully get to the fee structure and the chargebacks in this January timeframe, and the pilots are still on your agenda for-
Yes.
Great.
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
So we, we know this isn't a whole lot of new information, but we had committed to check in with you-
Yep.
-at this meeting, where we are with the budget. The other item that I, I wanted to talk about just for a minute is what the, what the line items look like. What I circulated to you is something you have seen before. This is, this is a template, or what a consolidated or omnibus budget article would look like if it included town CPS, CCRSD. So this is not anything new, and I don't expect any, any substantive discussion about this this evening, but I have heard from some of you individually about whether or not the town should continue to have 16 line items in its operating budget or fewer. And so this is just food for thought, maybe when we come back the next time, if you could think about whether or not you wanted us to propose any change in the number of line items. I'm not sure that we're going to make any recommendations, because we don't necessarily feel that strongly about it. Just for reference, town meeting votes the line item numbers, so 1 through 16, and the, the next column over, the ABCD, town meeting doesn't vote those officially, but we have a practice of showing those just to, to give more context. We don't have to continue doing that, but that's, that's what we've done. Probably three or four years ago, we did a pretty major consolidation, where I think we went, went, went from about 32 in the operating budget down to 16. I think the 16 have worked, well, actually, maybe there is some, some, all right. I think what we have has, has worked reasonably well. We're open to having discussion about it, but we're not necessarily going to make a recommendation to do anything different.
Aren't there really two, um, two, two ideas? One is disclosure, which is multiple line items, gives people a, um, information about what the, where the money is going, but that doesn't necessarily tie your hands in moving items between line items, does it?
So we-
If it does, then it does have a consequence that goes beyond just disclosure. It means that it limits the flexibility you have in managing the town budget.
So the, the legal appropriation is the line number column. The item number column is for disclosure purposes, for visibility, transparency, but we balance to the line number column. And then there is a process, there are two processes available to us to make transfers between line items, either at town meeting or after town meeting with the approval of the finance committee and the select board. And I think that process- And I think that process works fine. I know many times I have been asked, why does the school have essentially one line versus the town has sixteen? So on the school side, if there are budget adjustments proposed by the administration, those go to the school committee for approval. On the town side, if there are adjustments in the item number, the second column, those are handled through my office, they don't come to you. So there's a, a different process. That's why there's, there's more set in stone on the town side, because the process is different.
Well, we don't want to be set in stone, do we?
I like stone.
Yeah.
I would.
I don't know.
The, the, having worked inside of this process, the, the diversity of activities that, that the town budget is supporting is really quite broad. And I think that when, when one starts to consider that factor, there's something to be said for involvement at the, at the town meeting level, at the Finance Committee level, at this board's level, with allocation of resources relative priorities. I mean, and I, I'm going to say this, but I really don't mean it with, in any way, way, shape, or form as a knock, but the, this, the school's mission is an educational mission, and the basic mission is educate the children. Now, there's a lot inside of that, don't get me wrong, but they're, they're not running a cemetery, giving ambulance rides, paving streets, you know, generally building buildings. The, 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 it's a more focused mission, although it's a very large mission. And so it, it, it's always made sense to me, as a member of the Finance Committee and certainly as a department head, that, that some more specific allocations from town meeting and from, from this board made sense on the, on the town side relative to the school side.
So you keep it the way it is?
I, largely. I mean, there, it evolves over time, and it has evolved over time. I was, I participated in the last round of consolidation, and I don't think that, that didn't hurt anything. You know, the introduction of the general government got much broader. But that, you know, that has allowed the town manager a level of flexibility. I would continue to support that and be guided by. I would go, I would proceed carefully, is what I'm saying.
The way it is now, Carrie, could someone on the floor of town meeting get up and propose an amendment to one of these line numbers?
Yes.
Yes.
So they, so for example, if they wanted to look at legal expenses, they could stand up and amend that down if they were up.
Yes.
Not up, they couldn't do up, but they could do down.
Yes. What they, for instance, if somebody wanted to make an amendment to one A town manager's office, it would affect line one, the total of line one. It wouldn't necessarily affect A.
So.
I wonder if people are, I remember when we were talking about Estabrook, and people were upset about the legal. I, I remember recommending to people that they bring it up at town meeting. And I don't think people really are aware of that.
Yeah, so legal actually used to be, let's call it one I.
Right.
And the adjustment we made was to make it two, make it its own.
Great.
So there was more transparency on legal expenses.
I remember when we had thirty-two, and we went to sixteen, I made that motion to move the legal out of there.
That's great.
So Carrie, is it clear in the warrant that we're voting for the numbers and not the letters? Like, the example you just gave about the town manager's office, can we make sure it's really clear?
I think the moderator makes that very clear before the vote.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I, I can remember some previous time meetings where the moderator actually asked, you know, went line by line and asked whether there was anybody that was interested in making a.
Really?
Hasn't happened in some years.
Right.
Right.
It hasn't, you're right.
But before that, it was, and it was legal, I think.
We were, we were back in the old auditorium, to date myself.
Yeah, and actually, they did try to change the legal, now that I think of it.
So this is just to think about, and the, the next time we talk about budget, it would be helpful if you had different feedback that it's provided at that time.
And just to clarify, because I'm still confused sometimes about tier-one capital versus maybe some capital-type things that are in. Like, if you have a police cruiser, is that showing up in public safety here? Or is it showing up in tier-one?
For, for us, any capital expense up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is in tier-one. So we don't, we don't have, we used to have what we called capital outlay.
Yeah.
But through the Capital Planning Task Force, there was this identification of tiers one, two, and three. So tier-one is what we used to call capital outlay.
It's cash.
And it's cash. And for us, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is the, the top of what we would include.
Well, what's the lowest amount? Like, what if I?
It has to be more than ten thousand.
Okay, so if I buy a copy machine for five thousand, that's going to be in the operating budget?
Well, we, we purchase, we have one budget for technology.
All right, that's a bad example.
So laptops, copiers, that's all part of technology. We do bundle those together.
Okay.
Because we're, they are capital, because they have a life of two or more years. But we do, we do bundle them together. But a police cruiser is tier-one, a fire truck is tier-two.
What's an example of something that might be in the operating budget? That's not salaries or pencils.
Not much.
Okay, all right.
I mean, because tier, tier-one is, we, that's funded within the guideline through cash.
Okay.
And it's just how we distinguish between whatever you want to call capital outlay.
Okay.
Does this require any action by us?
It does not.
All right.
Nope, so we'll be back on January second, hopefully, to let you know we're within the guideline.
Okay.
Next time we see this, it'll not, it will not have the consolidated presentation, because the Finance Committee's not going with that.
Oh, no, that was different, that was different. The Finance Committee's not going with a consolidated guideline.
Okay.
They, they were considering doing one guideline instead of one per.
Okay.
So, they're different.
Okay. I want to review annual town meeting warrant articles and sponsorship. First item is Solar, Dean?
Before Dean gets started, though, can we define sponsorship?
Right.
Good question.
I think we should go over the process a little bit. So, I, I mean, in the past, the procedure was really clear. It was, I, I think, if I'm recalling it right, anything that was proposed, the Select Board voted to accept it in the warrant or not. Not that we were sponsoring it necessarily.
Yes.
We gave it a number.
Right.
Went on the warrant.
Exactly. Now, we had the right to reject it, but I don't remember that we ever rejected any of them, but we could have. But that didn't mean we were sponsoring it.
Right.
So now I think there's.
I agree.
Sponsoring is a different thing.
I mean, to.
The word is.
The word, to me, would suggest if something came up around this table, and we decided X, Y, Z was a good idea, and we thought town meeting should weigh in on it, that would be us developing an article the way any other committee would be. And I would expect us to be the proponents of that article, and therefore, if you want to use the word sponsor, sponsor. But I think that, I, I'm confused by the notion of sponsoring somebody else's work.
Right.
Well, I think an example is the fossil fuel. Were, were the Select Board the proponent last year of the fossil fuel article?
It may be, it may be an issue of, like, who holds a hearing on it and who makes the presentation on the, on the article, whether it's, whether it's something that is in the Select Board hearing calendar or if it's in the hearing calendar of some other committee.
But generally, the Select Board hearing, hearing has consisted of the general government articles, the ones from the Personnel Board, the, the.
Right.
And the sort of non-financial articles that were not the Planning Board and, and not the.
Right.
Not the major budgets.
Including petition articles.
Exactly.
So that doesn't really say who the sponsors are.
Yeah, it's, it's everything, it's the miscellaneous category in some of them.
But Henry's correct, that when you get to town meeting, is the Select Board going to be speaking as the proponent of the article?
Well.
That's.
Sometimes we do, but most of the time, we don't.
That's the hope, that's the sponsorship concept, I think.
So, but what, what strikes me is, we have before us a task force, a committee, a couple of committees, that are bringing forward articles in their own right and saying, we want to put these, we're submitting them to the town manager, we're the proponents of them. I don't, and eventually, of course, when we get to reviewing articles, we'll take positions.
Yes.
Recommending town meeting action, one way or the other. But that's the point at which I think we begin to state our position on the articles. It seems to me that the concept of sponsoring an article when it's being initially proposed for the agenda is almost predeliberating that article. And I'm concerned about that.
It's the wrong word. It should be that we're reviewing it to place it on the warrant, not even.
But we don't need to review.
Do we?
We, I think Mark is right. When we order the warrant, we just accept or reject all the articles in front of us. We don't review and deliberate them that night.
So we shouldn't be reviewing any of these?
Well, I think we generally depend on the review of the town moderator and town council for whether or not an article is, is, you know, not appropriate for, for town meeting action one way or the other. But again, I think we're administratively putting together an agenda based on the requests. And I think when we empower committees, we ask those committees to go off and do work in their subject area and come back and tell us what the town needs to do.
I agree with you, Mark. So are you saying that what, what we're proposing here on our agenda is not necessary? That's how.
Largely.
Well, once in a while, there are exceptions. I believe last year, when we did the fossil-free fuel bylaw, a number of groups came to our meeting and said, would the Select Board please be the proponent for this? And we agreed to do that.
Okay.
So it is possible, and I think that's the case with these three articles. The reason they're on our agenda, and there's some others that aren't on the list, the proponents are asking.
I'm not sure of that, I'm not sure of that.
Well, we can ask the proponents.
No, I think with the Solar, I'm pretty sure we're all confused about that. What's the role of the Select Board versus the committee? So I, well, I guess I could let Dean speak for himself, but I think Dean would be happy to have brought that himself and didn't necessarily want to go. Dean? Sorry.
Well, I'd like you to enter the.
I don't know, I don't know.
I, I don't think this memo from Town Council has been circulated to the board. Has it?
I don't think, it's not a memo, it's, it's an email.
It's an email.
A very informal email.
But basically, Town Council says there's only two ways that things get on to, with some exceptions, get on to the town meeting warrant. One is by, by the Select Board putting them on, and the other is by petition. And that they, and that the, he says.
No, there are other.
Also items, he said, by implication, the board has to insert, because they must be acted on by town meeting, such as the town budget, the school budget, and the regional schools' budget. And that.
CPS.
By custom, the Planning Board has, has always had a, a, a preferred, if you will, preferred position with regard to putting things on the, on the warrant, but it is not their right to do so. And so that it's either custom, or the Select Board, or petition.
But earlier, Carrie alluded to the, what the custom had become up until about two years ago. And my understanding of that customary practice was when committees proposed warrant articles in the course of their work and submitted them through the town moderator and on a timely basis, those articles were routinely placed on the warrant, essentially without comment from, from the Select Board
Correct.
until the point in the process when the Select Board was actually voting recommendations.
That's right.
Now, we might want to, we did talk earlier about maybe documenting the policy, and so do we, we might want to clarify things or maybe even change things. But this year, for now, it might be better to follow our existing policy.
Right.
Our existing practice, I shouldn't say policy, practice, which is to allow warrant articles submitted from committees to be put on the warrant.
Right, and that decision would be made on January second or eighth, when we're ordering the warrant. And, and at that point, the Select Board can reject an article if we really want to, if we have really good reason. But I've never been on the, I've been on the board four years already, and we've never rejected any.
The only thing I could think of is if we have an warrant article that doesn't specify a means of paying for it.
Right.
Right, that would be a good way to.
Right, if you have an illegal article. Now, if it's a petition article, you have to put it on if it has a signature, even if it's not legal and sort it out later, but.
Well, the moderator.
Even articles that, that lack all the particulars that they might need to eventually be adopted.
Right.
That's why we have the hearing process. That's why we ask the questions, and we ask the, the submitters of those articles to go back, do their work, improve their presentations, specify their funding sources, and be clear about it, so the town meeting will have a clear decision in front of it. And that, that's our role, to try to make sure that those are, those articles at least have a reasonable administrative chance of, of being adopted.
Right.
The moderator prevents a lot of those things from happening, too.
Yes, the moderator does.
Right, and then there's a, a, a person, I forget, who helps petitioners get the language correct. So it's very rare that the Select Board would reject an article. Usually, even if we don't agree with it, we want to have the debate at town meeting.
Right. I, I think it's not our job to prevent the town
Right.
from weighing in on things that the citizens want to talk about. So if a, a group wants to bring something to the town and say, let's discuss this, I think we should be enabling that, encouraging that even, as opposed to preventing that.
Well, there's another way to look at that, and that is that we're also thinking about, there's going to be a process of studying the procedures of town meeting. And one of the things that might, and, and increasing participation in town meeting, and one of the ways it might be adopted would be to have fewer items on the town meeting warrant, so that it isn't three, three nights.
Okay, but that's for the future.
Well, I know, but, well, that's all we have, is the future. We don't have the, we can't change the past.
No, but for this town meeting.
I, I know, but I'm just saying that you want to think about the fact that one of the things about the town meeting, and one of the things that affects participation is the large number of items that are on the warrant.
Right.
And really, there is no, virtually no discretion exercised, except whether they're illegal in terms of what the priorities should be and what should go on the warrant. And I've often thought that we, as the Select Board, ought to, for instance, limit the number of Planning Board items that go on the warrant every year. Many of them are things that have, you know, have only, you know, have only speculative impact on anything that happens. And the response I always, I always get on that is, "Well, it doesn't really matter. They just go on the consent agenda, so they don't take any time."
Well, I think you're raising, you're raising a really good point, but...
In a three-night town meeting, there's something that we don't want.
Right, this is part of a bigger issue, and I think maybe the task force that Carmen, the moderator, is putting together, maybe that would be something we wanted to recommend to them,
Right.
a process to limit the number of articles, and they can actually think it through.
Yeah, I think we should put that on a future agenda. I think that's a really good discussion that we should have.
Or they should have.
Both.
Well...
Yeah, but right now, I think we just have to decide, if all we're going to do is put these on the warrant, that's fine, but we don't really need to discuss that now. If, on the other hand, we're the proponent or the sponsor, I think that's what's on our agenda tonight. Do we want to take the lead on any of these articles or other articles?
It's up to the committee.
Absolutely no problem with agreeing to place these articles on the warrant. I also think there's real value in allowing time on our agenda for articles, particularly articles that are sort of singular in nature and unusual, to be discussed in this meeting so that we can, A, provide some guidance as to how they might be shaped and presented, B, so that the community involvement, we've already had a speaker rise tonight to mention that something that was arguably very much in their purview of their committee was new news to them. And so, we have a role to play in ensuring that the dialogue about these articles and these issues becomes available to the public on a timely basis. And so, that's why I'm all for talking about articles and giving people an opportunity to state what they're doing in their committees at this board, because, let's face it, not a lot of people show up at Personnel Board meetings or Solar Task Force meetings or other more detailed working sessions. So, we should do that. I'm just concerned about the notion that we're then, you know, putting a sponsorship decision in front of that or alongside that discussion.
Shouldn't, wouldn't the preview meeting be an opportunity, though, for these types of decisions?
It certainly is.
It should be.
And I think that's exactly what we heard was that, you know, the article that Dean is here to talk to us about was presented there, as were certain others, and people became aware of them. And we've had comments today as a result of that. And this is another step in that process as we move towards town meeting.
Okay, I missed something. What did we, we heard that the school committee said that the preview was the first time they had heard about this article?
They'd heard about the solar. We heard about the personnel bylaw, at least a beginning discussion about that. We had articles come forward from the DEI Commission, which have not been included in this list, were presented at that coordination meeting. And that, you know, resulted in some further discussion between other committees. And I think everybody learns from that process.
Okay, when we, when the Select Board reviews each article and decides what recommendation we're going to make, whether it's going to be, you know, affirmative, no action, or abstain,
Right.
isn't that the opportunity to have those conversations?
That is, and so, think about when that happens. That occurs after all of the hearings
Yes.
have taken place, and presumably, those articles have been fully presented, not just submitted, and those...
After the hearing.
Those article presenters have had the opportunity to answer questions and be heard. I mean, the enterprise budget hearing, as we all know, tends to be the beginning and the end of the discussion with, of large amounts of public funds because town meeting then turns around and puts those on the consent calendar. So, that is the opportunity to weigh in on those. But we make our recommendations after that process, not before it.
What I'm hearing you say, Mark, is that you think that the Select Board should take advantage of the opportunity to have a broader discussion of these articles before the warrant closes, right? Which, am I hearing you correctly?
I think we should take the opportunity to allow presenters
Yep.
to come and show us what they're working on
Yep.
as a way of educating ourselves, as a way of providing feedback on works in progress, and as a way of having the public be more informed about what is in the works.
Okay, that's, I think that's a worthy idea. Is that something that we want to think about when we document the process, which we talked about doing for subsequent? And this year, because we cannot extend the warrant in the time required to do that for all of them, that we simply, what, we continue with this agenda?
This year, we continue with the long-accepted practice of routinely placing on the warrant articles that are presented, whether they've appeared before us or not, that articles that committees have developed and duly passed through their meeting structure as long as they're submitted on time and not illegal.
I would agree with that for this year.
So, what are you saying you want to do tonight, then?
Well, I think we've obviously invited some speakers here today to talk about some issues which are, let's call them, unique in the sense that they're not routine articles, and we should hear something about them. But, and if we want to agree to place them on the warrant, that's fine. I'm just saying, I don't want to take a position, one way or the other, relative to sponsorship, because I don't want to prejudice this decision or any other decision by some article that some committee has asked us to look at, and we have chosen not to allow time for that on the agenda.
Okay, I would agree. So, I agree with you that I don't, we want to remove the word "sponsor" from the motion. Right? So, we're not going to, which, in fact, I already did.
Okay.
We did this before the meeting. So, I completely agree with you. So, you're saying, let's go ahead with the agenda. Next, on January 2nd, we'll have on the agenda all the articles that we're not discussing tonight? Are we agreeing to that?
I actually think that that's rather unnecessary in the sense that I think that if a committee has submitted an article,
Yep.
then, and they've done their work,
Yep.
we can proceed to whatever was January 8th or the subsequent meeting when we were going to assign them numbers and just put them on the warrant.
So, that would require a motion?
Okay.
So, that...
Isn't that our, isn't that consistent with past practice?
Well, sort of. So, those committees would all be the proponents of their own articles at the town meeting?
That's typically the way they always happen.
Typically, but sometimes, they've asked us to...
This time, it would be them.
If they're really asking us to be the proponent on their behalf, then, of course, they should contact the Chair, get on our agenda, and ask us whether we're willing to do that.
Okay.
So, you know, for example,
Got it.
the second one that we were about to talk about tonight, the town fossil free bylaw, the Climate Action Committee
Yep.
discussed this at length last week.
Yep.
They agreed to support it. They would like us to sponsor it, but in the event that we decide not to sponsor it, they may
Exactly.
go ahead and sponsor it anyway.
And it would still be on the...
Then it would still be on.
Right, that's the past practice, right there. Exactly what you just said.
But we don't have to take that up, and we can just say, "Do it yourself."
Okay, right.
So, the message to the committees is, if you want the Select Board to sponsor the article, get on our agenda. If you want to do it yourself, you don't have to get on our agenda.
Right, that's right.
And you're not going to find yourself left off of the warrant because of that.
Exactly. Does that work?
And that's for this year, and then we're going to refine that process.
We'll talk about it again.
Because that's the way we've been doing it every year, what you just said, Mary.
Well, that's...
Well, but we're moved away from it this year.
Not really.
That is a relatively poor reason for doing anything, that it's the way it's always been done.
I'm not saying whether it's good or bad. I'm just saying, this is how we've been doing it, and I think it's kind of late in the game to switch the process right now.
Okay, so then, I think the first thing we need to figure out right now is out of these articles, which there's three tonight, and I think there's four more that I can think of, which are the two DEI, the Ag Committee, and the Personnel bylaw. So, we've got seven articles. We have to figure out how many of the, if any, and you identified one, want to be sponsored by the Select Board, right? So, that's our first question.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and I think I asked the DEI Committee when they were here last time.
Yes, and?
And I think Joe, as co-chair, said he wanted the Select Board to be the sponsor, but I, I think that's... Yeah. But maybe they need to formally get on our agenda, and we can discuss it. Maybe that's the best way to do it.
Why don't we deal with what we have in front of us tonight?
Okay.
And we have people who have sat through all of this discussion.
Or Dean.
Which, and so, let's just...
Do you want to be sponsored, Dean?
Shall we begin?
Yes.
Thank you, Dean.
You understand that the school, we had a little preview of the point of view of the Regional School District on your adorning their premises.
I make that comment a couple of times in time.
Great. That'd be great.
Let's go from Dean.
Good.
Okay, shall I begin?
Yes.
Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace. I am the Chair of the Solar Implementation Task Force. So, those are the formalities. What you have in your packet, and before you, with an addendum that it came out after the packet was closed, and I sent this to Shannon yesterday, is basically an article looking for bonding authority, providing bonding authority that would be underwritten by ratepayer paying for the bond repayments, putting the light plant in the position to build multiple solar projects along with some infrastructure improvements to the local grid. So, that's what this article is. It's within the charge of the Solar Task Force. Per the charge, I'll just read, it is recommended that the Task Force identify at least one site for solar installation that can be done quickly to demonstrate feasibility and build momentum. So, we feel as though we're working within the charge we were given, which is to bring a project or more than one to the town for building momentum in solar development. So, that's, that was kind of what we were about. We shredded through a lot of draws to get to the three projects that are on the list, and those have been priced out with close cooperation from the light plant. We had a, you know, a net number as of last, a week ago Thursday. We all slept on it and had another meeting this Thursday. And on the recommendation of the Light Plant Director, we increased the size of the contingency because these are very early numbers, and the contingency that was in the original packet that you were sent seemed a little light to the Light Plant Director. So, we increased the contingency. We did not change any of the estimates for what these projects would cost. The costs that you see in the cost structure are fundamentally the full bust-out retail number that it would cost to build each of those locations. We expect to get 25.5% underwriting from the federal government once these are, once these are up and running. We have to build them, we have to, we have to create the funding to fully build them, and then we will return, we will get returns from the federal government once we file tax paperwork to show that we've actually expended funds. So, these numbers are retail numbers, but we would expect that when the town is finally responsible, there would be a 25.5% reduction in what you see here in terms of the funding. For all of these items, we believe there is, there would be that kind of funding from the federal programs. So, if you have questions about what we've done, where we're putting them, I don't want to go into huge, long detail, but we feel as though we've been working hard at this since August, and these are the sites that we're recommending that the town move forward with.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're, you would be asking the town to approve, I guess, with the contingency, $9 million in borrowing?
Yes, $9 million, too.
And it would be the CMLP Enterprise Fund that would do the borrowing under the auspices of the town?
The language that you see in the article text is, the article is the same language in terms of the funding components of the language that was used for the CMS arrays that were part of the light plant's action last year at town meeting. So, that's identical language. I believe it would probably fly with Town Council and Bond Council. The way that this is done is that the town is the ultimate backstop in the event that we do something to the light plant, like decide to, you know, get rid of it, and now start buying energy from Eversource, the town would be ultimately responsible.
Right, I understand that part, but in the meantime...
The light plant would retire the debt, yes.
The light plant would add this cost to the electric rates so that they could pay off this bond?
Yes.
Okay, so how much are electric rates expected to go up?
We think that that's a very modest number. We don't have final, we haven't worked through all the finals on that yet. But we would say, in the era in which the bond is being retired, there would be a very, very modest, for the less expensive ground mount system, we think that that would actually be cash flow positive. For the more expensive roof mount system, those would be cash flow negative, but at the level of like $30,000 a year. Spread over all of the ratepayers, that's probably something like five bucks on your bill. I don't, I don't, we haven't finalized those numbers.
Okay, but for town meeting...
We expect to work through that, and by the time we get to the hearing, we'll have very solid numbers on what the rate impacts would be.
Great.
So, what we could expect, though, is that those projections would look similar to what was proposed for the middle school solar.
Yes, although, I will say, the middle school, we built some of the most expensive solar that we could because you have to build very serious infrastructure underneath parking lots. That's, you're basically building a building underneath the arrays at the middle school. None of the systems proposed here require that kind of underlying infrastructure. So, these are less expensive per kilowatt of energy to create.
Could you just, so maybe Shannon can put those four projects back up again. Could you just maybe characterize what the relative size of each of the projects are and what the battery capacity might be?
Okay, so the landfill, I don't know, you're going to want to put it on the screen, that's fine. The landfill solar is an added area over at the landfill that was not developed when we put the original arrays over there. And the main reason it was not developed is because the land undulates and has some slope. And at the time, in 2014, they did not have technology to create floating arrays that would sit on slopes without eventually sliding down the hill. Eleven years later, there's a lot of landfills in the country. These technologies have been developed so that you can put arrays on landfill caps that are on slopes. So, we think that's about 1.55 megawatts of power that can be generated off that site. On the CCHS ground mount, that's about 441 kilowatts of energy, and the CCHS roof is about 450 kilowatts of energy. So, the site, the CCHS campus would be somewhere in the vicinity of 900 kilowatts of energy would be generated there, and about 1.55 over at the landfill.
And what's the storage size?
The storage, the battery that's been quoted here, which uses Tesla, what's called a mega-pack battery as a, kind of a benchmark item. They sell a battery that holds 3.9 megawatt-hours of energy, and it can dispatch energy at a rate of 1.9 megawatts per hour. The, that battery is very similar to the one that was designed in for the CMS system, which was four megawatts, four megawatt-hours of capacity and two megawatts of dispatch capacity. So, it's very, very similar to the one that was proposed over there.
Thank you. And the reason that the battery project would be useful would be because it's beneficial in peak loading and solar saturation situations.
It's beneficial for those reasons. It's for peak shaving, for, you know, basically pulling down some of the capacity payments that the light plant needs to make. When, you know, our peaks go up, that causes us year-long billing issues that can be reduced if we have battery capacity.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. First of all, the $600,000 for the control and monitoring software, right? Um, first of all, the $600,000 for the control and monitoring software, right? Where are you putting that when you're calculating the impact to rate payers or the net present value from any, one of these three projects?
So the, um, to, to give you kind of a, I'm going to net this out a little bit.
Yep.
If you take all of the, all of this.
Yep.
And you divide it by how much energy this entire package will generate.
Yep.
This will cost about $3.56 per watt of energy generated. The same number over at CMS was $5 a watt. So this, in aggregate, even with the inclusion of the infrastructure, which we think is, is absolutely critical, you really can't do these things anymore without doing something like that.
That includes this?
That includes that number.
Got it, okay.
That's all in, it's an all-in number.
My second question is, um, who's sponsoring this? Is this, do you want us to? Is CMLP doing it as part of their enterprise fund articles? What's, how do you want to bring this to town meeting?
We are basically fulfilling our charge. We're happy to just put it on the warrant as our committee. We would love to have the select board, if, if we get even the imprimatur of the select board, that'd be great. But if you just say, "We agree and, and we support it," that's a different vote, but we're happy with that. We've, I've talked to the light board. I had a meeting with the light board at their last meeting last Wednesday.
I know.
And it was a relatively warm reception that we received there. They did not take a formal vote, but we did receive a fairly warm reception.
You did. The other thing is, we're going to hear a comment, I think, from the, um, chair of the high school. And so obviously the cooperation between you and the high school is critical to this.
Yes, it, it's absolutely critical. A couple of things about that. Right now, um, anything regarding the schools can obviously, um, needs to be developed between now and town meeting. We've put these on there to develop the bond authority and the capacity for the light plant to do this if the school is receptive.
Okay.
That, that's the reason that these are on here is to, in the event that we have some receptivity at the, at the school, the bonding authority would be in place and the town would vote for it. We only get one bite at the apple per year to do this, and so we figured, let's go all in, we're good.
But you do have the landfill in any event.
We have, that's the thing. The, the charge says, you know, at least one site. We have three. The landfill has its own issues, and we need to technically work through making sure we have, that we can build on the slopes and everything, but we're pretty, we're pretty sure we can. We've gotten good.
You have a combination of cell tower and?
And solar power.
I don't know about how you.
One, one package?
I don't know how you do a cell tower on top of a landfill cap. We're having enough trouble trying to figure out how to keep, you know, solar arrays from sliding down the hill. So I, I want to get out of the, the talk about cell towers.
Slide down together.
Yeah, fine, it's a package deal, but it's fine.
Good, thank you.
So you want to take public comment now?
Yeah, sure. I mean, while it's relevant.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to start at the beginning again.
No, you don't have to start.
Well, because Dean wasn't here for the beginning. You remember, but Dean wasn't here. Hey, Tracy Rono, Chair of the Regional School Committee. First time I was made aware of a potential warrant article for solar at CCHS was after the town warrant preview meeting on December 2nd. As you are aware, any additions or proposals for alteration to the CCHS campus need to be voted on by the regional school committee for acceptance and approval. I met with Mr. Banfield, the superintendent, and CPS Chair Alexa Anderson October 23rd as we are the team that plans for our school committee agendas. Mr. Banfield shared with the entire school committee the CADMS Solar and Energy Feasibility Assessment from May 22nd of 2020. As the CADMS report states, the roofs of the high school are the best candidates for solar and together could host 365 kilowatt nameplate of PV modules. The roofs are free of significant shading from trees. According to the report, the ground mount system is the least favorable. As we discussed with Mr. Banfield at our October 23rd meeting, in order to be put on our school committee agenda, we were looking for more information on the actual design of the intended solar and the placement of the arrays. At this point, it is unclear where these solar panels are being proposed. In reading your packet for this evening, I came across the language of the $9.2 million warrant article. Given that $1.9 million is specifically targeted towards CCHS, the school committee would need, sorry, uh, the school committee would need to evaluate the designs and placement on the CCHS campus. There was some discussion at the November 16th solar task force meeting about a potential lease payment to Concord-Cartelal Regional School District, which has not been shared with us. I learned this by watching the November 16th solar task force meeting. Without a presentation from the light plant, an MOU, Terms of a Lease Agreement, or a design of the proposed solar, it is not appropriate for the school committee to have this item on an agenda for discussion. As soon as we have the information, I would happily put the light plant and the solar task force on our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think, can we move on to the next item? Or do we, uh, the next item is the fossil fuel.
Free.
Eric?
Fossil fuel free.
Good evening. I'm Eric Sims, the Sustainability Director here in Concord. And I'm here to talk about the draft article to make amendments to the bylaw associated with Concord's participation in the fossil fuel-free building demonstration program. The bylaw was originally passed in 2021, and then it was amended at special town meeting earlier this year in 2023, back in January. The program is intended to allow municipalities the right to prohibit the use of fossil fuels in new construction and major renovations. Concord's bylaw differs a little bit from the Department of Energy Resources model bylaw, as well as from the bylaws of the other pilot towns in at least two significant ways. One is that we do not include major renovations in our bylaw. It only applies to new construction. And the other is that our bylaw includes an explicit exemption for affordable housing. So we submitted our application to the program earlier this summer and had been waiting to hear from, from DOER about the, the fate of that application. They reached out to us about two and a half weeks ago to say that they wanted to have a conversation about our bylaw. I had a conversation with them on December 5th, at which time they strongly recommended that Concord consider including major renovations in our bylaw, given that we're the only town that doesn't have that, and they're looking for continuity across the program. So that's, uh, one of the amendments that is sought by this, this particular article. The other is, uh, to remove the exemption for affordable housing. That is something that is also unique to, to Concord. None of the other pilot towns have explicit exemptions to affordable housing. Instead, they have a, a waivers process that's defined. And, um, within that waiver process, a developer who has a development that includes affordable housing can, can request a waiver as part of that process. So that's, uh, those are the two amendments, primary amendments, that would be in that particular article.
And this is a, a, a home rule petition which would, uh, is it an amendment to the petition that we've already submitted to the legislature?
Not to the home rule petition. This, so there was a, in 2021, there was a home rule petition that was passed, and there was also a bylaw that was passed. So this is just to amend the bylaw. If I'm correct, I believe the home rule petition is still pending approval at the state level. So we're still waiting to hear official word on that. But, um, the, this is just to, to change the bylaw to better reflect.
So this is not something that was designed to increase the, um, likelihood that the legislature would, um, adopt the home rule petition? This is something in addition to that?
Yes.
I think this is to increase the likelihood that we would be selected to participate in the demonstration or the pilot program? Is that close?
The conversation with, with DOER was, was, um, we asked whether this, if, if we weren't able to include major renovations, whether that, that's something that would exclude us from the program. They indicated that it was not necessarily something that would exclude us, but it was just something that they were strongly recommending for the sake of the program and the continuity of the program, that they would really like to see included in our bylaw so that there's continuity across the entire program.
And what's your, what's the definition of major renovation?
So major renovations, there's, it, it depends on the size of the building. For residential, it's typically over 1,000 square feet. And then there's other language that goes along with, for larger buildings and commercial buildings. But that's what's in place already now. So currently, Concord uses the, um, updated stretch code for our building code. And the renovations that would be included in the, this program, the fossil fuel-free demonstration program, are ones that are, that already apply here as well. So it, with the one exception being that fossil, you wouldn't have a fossil fuel pathway for renovations.
So what's the advantage to the town of being part of the DOER pilot? Why do we want to, um, remind me, why do we want to do that? Why do we want to impose these two other restrictions on us? Because they, they strongly recommend it. So we want to stay part of that program. Why, what's the, what are the advantages to the town?
Well, advantage to the town is that it aligns very closely with our, our climate action and resilience plan goals. You know, we've, have a lot of policy in place and actions that, that the town has taken in recent years as part of that plan to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And participating in this program as, as one of these 10 pilot towns would allow us to be right at the forefront of being able to regulate the use of fossil fuels in new construction and major renovations.
I understand that, it's just that we wouldn't have to be part of the pilot to do that, right? We could, I mean, I think I hear what you're saying is that you're saying we should be part of the pilot because it aligns with the things we said we wanted to do. So why can't we just do those? What's, what's the added benefit of being part of the, of the, of the pilot?
Well, if, if you're not one of the 10 towns that's in the pilot program, then you're not allowed to prohibit the use of fossil fuels.
I didn't know that.
Oh, because the bill, the, the bill has not been passed yet.
Wait, I didn't know that. Say that again. I did know that? Oh, I did know that.
You did.
So the fossil fuel, the fossil, the fossil fuel home rule petition has yet, not yet been adopted by the legislature.
I got it.
So, but another, a deeper question to ask on this is that if your, if your concern is the environment and not our leadership.
Right.
Aren't we, isn't the environment better off if one of the pilot towns is a town that's much bigger than Concord? And therefore it will have far more of impact on the environment if somebody else is chosen?
Perhaps in theory. Although Boston, Boston just, well, Boston just had an opportunity to participate in the program. And they declined to do it. And I think in part it was because of the size with actually implementing and piloting the program.
Well, but there's intermediate choices as well.
Real benefit in, in having somebody prove it can be done. And 10 towns is better than nine towns.
Well, there will be 10, won't there, no matter?
We're not sure.
Unnecessarily, I mean.
Why did Boston drop out?
If we, if we don't do this, we also potentially make the administration of the pilot program more challenging because we would be the one town where major renovations aren't included and affordable housing gets to go forward without it. I think, I, I would also remind the board of the, this, at the time that we passed our bylaw, we were kind of ahead of everybody else. And there was a concern, particularly from the development community, that, um, putting a fossil-free requirement on affordable housing would adversely affect the availability of that affordable housing. I think now, at this stage of the game, the affordable housing community generally agrees that by, that it's not a terribly large additional investment and the resulting of housing is actually more affordable because the, because the energy bills tend to be lower.
Right, I think a lot has changed. This, we've been working on this for what, three years now? So things have changed a lot in the last three years.
So this is a reflection of, of, of more of the state of the art of what, what should be in one of these bills than not.
So this is Linda, uh, if I can just interject here. Um, perhaps I missed it, but, um, we're still hoping to be one of the, the pilot programs, correct? It's not a given. And, uh, so that's one question I have. And then the other, um, comment I want to make is that, um, actually a question. Who, who did we, what department or who is actually giving us this advice?
Which state department?
Oh, this is the Department of Energy Resources with the state.
Okay, thank you. And then in terms, isn't it true that we're still hoping to be one of the 10? It's not automatic that we're one of the 10?
Technically, yes, that's true. So, uh, the, the Department of Energy Resources is currently reviewing the applications from all 10 of the pilot towns, um, or nine as it is right now. And my, so they, they reached, obviously they reached out to us with this, but, um, they've also been reaching out to some of the other communities with, with similar requests, um, but perhaps on different topics. So for example, with Lexington, Lexington had already included major renovations in their bylaw, but they had a definition of major renovations that differed from what DOER has as their, as their model bylaw. And so DOER went to Lexington and said, "We'd like you to amend your major renovations to be defined the way that we have them defined." So it's not exclusively Concord here that's being asked to, to consider making changes to, to bylaws.
Thank you, that's very helpful, thank you.
So is the select board going to sponsor this article? Is that, is, so this is the Climate Action Committee? You're speaking for them or?
Yeah, so, so I think part of the reason why it's on the agenda here was that this has all happened very quickly, since we just had this very recent conversation with them. And as soon as we found out about this, we tried to get it on the agenda with, um, the intent that, you know, perhaps the select board would like to consider taking this on or taking this up. In the meantime, um, as, as Mark had suggested, the Climate Action Committee met last week and, and they voted in favor of supporting and sponsoring it if, if the select board was inclined not to for some reason.
Well, and if we had, and the, and the fact that the town has already passed the home rule petition for the fossil-free statute, which it hasn't adopted yet, but the town has, um, the town meeting has adopted that, would make it hard for us not to support this addition to it.
Right, it's, it's maintaining, I mean, as we know, legislature moves at its own pace. And sometimes it takes us a while, it takes them a while to get around to something. So we're just keeping our request current.
That's right.
Okay.
So we're ready for a motion?
Do we want a motion? We're ready, okay.
I'll make a motion and see what the, see what the board thinks. Move that the select board sponsor an article to amend the town fossil fuel-free bylaw to align with state guidance on the, on the annual town meeting warrant.
Second?
Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Um, my, um, gosh, Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Another one bites the dust.
Okay.
There we have one more left.
250th.
250th, Gary?
Good evening. Gary Clayton, 31, Lake Worthland. I serve as Chair of the 250th, Concord 250th Executive Committee. I was here with other members of the executive committee two weeks ago to provide an update for the board. Uh, and at that time, the question was posed, um, given our identified need for additional funding for public safety and security purposes for the, the 250th events and thinking particularly the time just before, during, and immediately after the parade on April 20, on April 19th, 2025. I'm back this evening to ask explicitly that the select board, in fact, be the proponent for such a funding article. My reasoning for that is that the, the work of the committee, the executive committee, is rec, is one that is recognizing that this is very much a town-wide commitment and that it is reflected in the charge of the select board that established this committee, that the work of the committee is, if not unique, of a very special nature in that it's, you know, we're focusing on. unique, of a very special nature in that it's, you know, we're focusing on events, that is the celebration of the 250th anniversary of the beginning of the American Revolution, and that that is a celebration that is given special consideration, special emphasis, usually on every 50 years or even 100-year cycle. So it's not something that happens every year, not every 25 years. It's typically, again, within a timeframe of 50 to 100 years. The other important facet of the charge we have is that come 2026, we're done. We're finished, and that executive committee dissolves at that point in time. So given the, the impact of this event on the community, the scope of the work that really touches all parts of the community, both within the town government and within businesses, the nonprofit sector and the like, and looking at, you know, what the board has asked us to do in terms of putting together, thinking about funding needs, and specifically I'm looking at the, the charge of the select board that was adopted initially in 2021 and amended twice thereafter, including this past spring in 2023. They were asked to identify funding needs and a plan for both town and private funding, which would include or require a 501(c)(3) entity. So as we explained at our last update for the select board, we did provide you with a draft budget that we've been working on. I've subsequently provided you with version four of that budget. I think you've all received that information, where we're looking at reducing the amount that we anticipated needing to request a town meeting for, again, public safety and security, and that, you know, we've identified those funding needs. Our plan for both town and private funding, well, we are in the process of establishing the 501(c)(3) nonprofit enterprise. And the plan that we're bringing forward this evening is, again, specifically asking that the select board serve as proponent for an article in the town meeting warrant for the additional $350,000 that we believe is going to be necessary for public safety and security. Any questions?
I have a question. We were talking earlier, I don't know if you were here, Gary, but we were talking about the amount of money for the parade.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that when you were here last time, you were saying that, oh, gosh, that you were not going to be using money from the general fund for the parade, if I understood that correctly. And yet tonight I'm hearing that.
I don't, I don't think I said that. If I did.
You didn't mean to.
Didn't mean to say that.
Okay.
To be, to clarify, no, the idea is to attempt to use the monies that are, that have been budget annually for the parade.
Yep.
That we clearly expect would need to be supplemented, but still, discussing this with the town manager, that that might be incorporated into the town's operating budget for 2025.
Right.
Thus removing it from the budget plan for the 250th that you have for you now.
Right. So I did hear you say that last time. And then about half an hour ago, or I, I'm not sure if you were here, but we were talking about the budget.
Mm-hmm.
And it looks like we might have some difficulty incorporating that additional $120,000 into the budget. So we're thinking it may have to go back into the article. So just, just to clarify what I said, because I've been very clear with Gary and the committee that I didn't expect to be able to fund that additional within the guideline. Right? I mean, you've heard, within, within the guideline.
Okay, so then where would the money come from?
Right. It would, it would need additional consideration.
So, well.
You talked about the parade, you're talking about Gary's request.
The parade, the additional cost for the parade.
So is that another warrant article? I mean, you needed for, where would?
So all we have to do is urge, and then.
Is what?
Urge the finance committee to adjust the guideline appropriately. It wouldn't be the first time that, or we could find ourselves in a position of supporting a number for the town budget that exceeded the guideline by an amount that coincidentally happened to be the amount for the.
Or we could ask the 250th to put that money back into their article.
Yes, we could.
Right. That's, thank you.
Which is what, what I was, I could maybe be convinced of one of the other options, but that was the, I think, why I had suggested that was because I think it's very transparent that way, that we're saying to the town, this is the total cost.
Exactly. I agree.
It doesn't include the 40,000 or whatever of the regular parade, but it includes all the addition, all the incremental cost.
Yes, yes.
And I think it's our duty to be most transparent with the town meeting.
It's not really about our transparency. I think that there are two portions of this event that are the key elements. And one is the parade and ceremony. The other is the public safety that goes along with it. And those are amounts that really need to be protected. And if we have a warrant, town meeting warrant article that includes them, which is for a substantially greater amount, it prejudices the availability of those funds that might, we might otherwise be able to protect separately as part of the ongoing, the ongoing budgets for the public safety departments, or the, or the money that we have now available, and for what needs to go to the public ceremonies committee to run a, you know, a heightened public ceremony and parade event. So my, my sense about this, having been through the, the process more in more detail myself, is that I would like to see those items be carved out. And it's not that they should not be included in the total cost, but they should, I don't think they need to, that they, they should be lumped into a single appropriation with the 250th.
They shouldn't?
They should not be into, lumped into a single appropriation.
So would you favor two different articles, one for the parade incremental, one for the public?
How would you, how would you propose that we pay for those?
Describe how, describe how we could manage within existing funds, providing the additional money that's necessary to run the parade and ceremony.
I didn't hear that. I heard she needed $120,000 more.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we are not far enough along in the budget process yet to provide, to answer yes or no. Can, can we fund this? Or would we choose to fund this within the guideline, given all of the competing requests? We do expect to be there on January 2nd.
Okay. Then maybe we should come back on January 2nd to figure out whether, what the amount of either this article is, or another article, or if you think you can absorb it within the guideline.
Right, right. And I guess I would point.
Or we can ask for, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's not, it's not completely out of the question that once in some cycle that we have an expense that's extraordinary and the budget grows to accommodate that. So a good example, even though we don't, we no longer do it this way, when we do a revale every five years, you could see a big jump in year five to accommodate that additional work. We don't do it that way anymore, but in the past.
Or elections.
Yeah, when we had presidential elections.
Right. Those types of things. So it's not, it's not that there isn't any precedent. I think the issue is, given that we will have a warrant article for some of the additional expenses, are we going to separate them or keep them together?
Right.
And we can give a better update on January 2nd. But I can't imagine, given what you saw this evening, that we're going to have $125,000 that we don't have another use for. Right. The other thing that I would really ask from the 250th committee is, I would really like to see some very serious fundraising efforts from the private sector. I know there's going to be some, but it's, we're, it's just a little more than a year from now. And I'm getting very concerned that, we haven't seen much specifics on that yet. And so I, it would make me a lot more comfortable supporting something at town meeting if we also had a similar contribution from the private sector. It would make a huge difference.
When we had this conversation before, what I was separating in my mind is discretionary spending and spending we have to do. Because we need to remember, we're not bringing, we're not inviting these people here. They're going to show up on their own. And we have to have the public safety and all the other things that go into that so that we can handle that. And that is something I think is incumbent, we need to fund that. So that, this, the 350, to me, because I have confidence that this is a pretty good number, I have no problem supporting that number. I don't. The parade, you know, we're still discussing it, and we'll get, we'll learn more. So I just wanted to articulate my feelings towards this.
So are we saying that we would anticipate, in any event, that there will be an article requesting funding for the, for the 250th celebration? It's not the funding that we're talking about now?
We don't know yet.
Well, I think.
Or possibly not. There is other items beyond those items. And then, and there will be a town budget. So in terms of preserving the options going forward here, if we, if we wait to see how the town budget is coming together, wait to see how the guideline process is, is coming together, we don't really sep, you know, we don't really close off any options. It's that, am I?
But if we are really, if we're really careful, if we're really careful, we can go a long way toward covering the parade and public safety expenses through the, now what's, the $700,000 that we already have allocated to the event.
Well.
And then you eliminate all the other dimensions to the event.
No, I thought the budget we saw from them.
Well, I know that, but that's.
Well, but that's their budget. So we've got to go with their.
But that didn't include the rest of the parade, that 120,000.
I know.
Yeah.
I know. But I, I think what I'm hearing now is, let's just spend all that money on the parade and not on the other things. And I'm saying, no, that's, that's not the budget that was presented to us by the committee that we've asked to put together the budget. So.
So I think we all have a lot more work to do before we.
So January 2nd, I think, is when we'll know more about the parade. How we're going to pay for the parade. Is that?
Well, we'll know more about the guideline.
If we can pay for, in the guideline, or?
Well, I didn't hear that. I heard that, I heard the finance director talking to us about coming later in January with a more refined operating budget for the town.
Well, Mark, if you want to preserve all the different options, you might want to put in an article for the 250th for a pretty high amount, and then reduce it at town meeting when we know what we're talking about.
That's a good idea. That's a great idea. We could put in one for 470, which, I'm just putting this out there, 350 for public safety, 120 for the parade. And then if we learn later on that in fact we can absorb all or some of that within the guideline, or we want to go outside of the guideline, those are two options, we can reduce the amount when we get to town meeting. That's an idea.
But the question is still going to be, if you take that, any number the town meeting is, if it is appropriated, where will the money come from?
Free cash. Well, that's what the article is asking for. It's asking for it to come from free cash.
Will there be enough?
Well, I think so. But that's Carrie, that's, that's what we need to have.
I think we'll have an update on that, January 2nd as well. Again, I think the more private fundraising we can do, the closer we can get to supporting this.
Yeah, I understand. And that is happening. But, so, and I agree, you know, the more private money we can bring to this, the better it will be. I'm just trying to understand, before leaving here tonight, is there going to be?
Sorry.
An article submitted as, with the select board as the proponent for that article for the town meeting warrant.
I think we need to talk about that again on January 2nd.
Yeah, we're not ready, I'm not ready to vote to be a sponsor of that until we get some of this other stuff cleared up.
I do want to add one thing, though, to your comment, Carrie, Terry, is that at the finance committee meeting, Rick Laff, what?
Rick Loughlin?
Loughlin.
Yes.
Was emphasizing to the FinCom that a lot of the programming that they were doing outside of public safety has been cut and depends entirely on fundraising. So, so the point I'm making is, again, when I look at their budget, I kind of separate it out to discretionary and non-discretionary. And the discretionary part is the part for all of the programs, programming that they're doing, that they're depending on fundraising for. And the public safety part is something that I think, again, this is my opinion, that I think we should be responsible for because we're hosting this, and we need to do it right.
But if then there's not much luck with fundraising, we'll end up with basically just a parade and not much of an event besides that.
Yep.
And I'm not sure that's what we really want to do. So I'm not sure I agree. I'm not.
Cutting, cutting the.
You can't cut public safety, though, right?
That's what I'm saying.
I know. It's a very difficult.
And I, I.
I know.
It's like if somebody told you that there's going to be a blizzard on a certain date, you're going to plan for snow plowing.
Right.
You have to.
And if you were going to have a party.
And if you know that it's coming, then it seems to me that, that if we delay making a commitment that allows for the planners of this to go out and begin to line up resources, the contractors, the, you know, whatever the materials and contracts that they need to put in place to support the, the public safety effort, then all we really do is make those things more scarce and more expensive. So I'm not sure that.
I agree with that.
Going out with a non-answer is, particularly serves us very well when we know this expense is coming. And I'm, I am uncomfortable with the idea of saying, well, you know, tuck it into someplace, something that was already authorized for some broader program, and take away from that. That's rescoping, and I don't think that's, that makes sense either.
Yeah.
So I think we're deciding we have to talk about it again on January 2nd.
Yeah, we're not, we're not ready to make a decision right now. I need more information. Sorry.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Gary, you and I should talk, because I've had some conversations with the, our legislative representatives on some of those prospects.
Good. Let's do that.
Okay. Does that cover, do we have anything else?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
Myself, Mary Hartman. I, Mr. Howell?
Hi.
Yes.